I call to order the City of University Heights City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 11, 2018. Today is the 17th anniversary of 9/11. I'd like a moment of silence to remember victims and family. Thank you. Everyone's here tonight as far as council except for Dottie, and I expect her to come soon. Josiah Belskemper, the city engineer, will be here shortly also. Approval of minutes of August 21st. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of August 21st? Hearing none. The minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, first order of business is public input. We have a nice group of people tonight. Thank you for coming. If you'd like to speak, you can come up to the microphone and state your name and address and speak to the council. Anything you want. Yeah, no, you can speak right now. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Brian Losi. I'm actually from Des Moines, 1500 Northeast Morgan Drive in Bondurant, Iowa. We own a house at 214 Golf View here in University Heights. First of all, I am on the city council at Bondurant, so I truly understand what you all go through on a day-to-day basis. Obviously, our issues may be a little bit different, but I think we all kind of have some similar issues. I just want to talk a little bit about the VRBO and the ordinance that you're seeking to pass with regard to limiting tendencies to less than, or prohibiting tendencies of less than 30 days. I'm not entirely versed in the thought process and the conversations that have gone on with respect to all of the tendencies, the issues that you've had and trying to restrict those in a, to a certain percentage of the housing, as well as then this particular VRBO ban is what it seems like it's intended for. We operate our VRBO and we bought the house in University Heights here because, well, for two reasons. One, we wanted a home here in Iowa City so we could have a place for football weekends. My wife is a rabid Hawkeye fan and trying to find a place to stay is difficult and makes parking so much easier and staying so much easier. So primarily, that's one of the main reasons that we bought the house. But we also fell in love with the community. It's a quaint little house. It's a quaint little community. We love it. We love being here on Saturday, Saturday, Friday nights to Sunday afternoons on football weekends. So, and we've, and other weekends, we're able to get out here for various sporting events and activities that we have in Iowa City. I just want to let you know that VRBOs are typically, and my brother-in-law operates one in Ohio as well, VRBOs are typically, the owner occupies them to some degree, just like we do. My brother-in-law has a house in Ohio that he does. He lives in a different state but has family back in there. So, in the meantime, he covers his expenses, and that's what we do, we cover our expenses, to allow us to be able to use it. I know some people use it for profit, and we certainly like to make a little bit of money, but that's not our primary course. But I think most people that are doing a VRBO are doing that in order to generate some income, but also reserve their ability to stay where their house is or their condo is. The types of people that we have, we've seen, and I think this is probably unique a little bit to our location, are, we've had a traveling nurse at the university hospitals. We've had a university baseball player, Hawkeye baseball player's mother and father stay there for, during the season. They'll kind of come and go during, when there's home games, but they reserve it for the two months during the baseball season. Just this past summer, we've, in the entire summer, we had a university professor from somewhere in Eastern Europe come and stay the entire summer and study at the university as well. So, long-term rentals kind of lends itself to longer-term rentals a little bit with the location next, right next to the campus and the hospital, et cetera. So, some of the other types of clientele that we've had, though, are not, you know, the types that are, that cause problems in communities. We've had people staying there while they are being treated at the hospital. They use it as a base of operation for their family. They, the family member that's being treated can come back and forth, stay in a comfortable location instead of a hotel, and as well as their family, they can all gather in one place much easier as well. So, we've had traveling teams, gymnastics teams, swim teams, chaperoned by adults. We have some pretty strict regulations. And I think most VRBOs do that. They mean, they have a vested interest in the home. One, they want to make some money. They are, VRBO clientele are generally those that are going to be spending a little bit more money. When you do a VRBO, generally you price it just a little bit less than several hotel, how many of our hotel rooms would take up the number of bedrooms? We have four bedrooms in that house, so we try to price it under, about the same, it's just a little bit less than what four hotels would be. So, it's a little bit cheaper, but in, on par there. So, student housing, and I know that's one of the issues, I think that's one of the issues that the council is facing, and I understand if that would be the case. I wouldn't want a whole bunch of students living next to my house either. And my son was a student here for a while, so I wouldn't want him living in my house either. But that's, or next to me. But if student housing is kind of the concern with VRBOs, then I think that's one of the things that you're not going to see in a VRBO-type setting on a typical basis. It just isn't, isn't cost-effective to do that. They are generally seen as a shorter-term stay. I can see people running a house, running it out during football games, baseball games, sporting events especially. But I think given the, in University Heights, given the location to the hospitals, that's another type of usage that you would see quite a bit in VRBOs. And that's, that's what we've seen. I was, I was kind of, I was very pleasantly surprised when we, when we bought that. I mean, we kind of had an idea of traveling nurses because we're familiar with that concept. My wife's a nurse, and we have a friend that's a traveling nurse. So, they're looking for those types of arrangements. Given its proximity to the hospital, to Kinnick and Carver Hawkeye and the campus, I think the type of clientele are not the kind of clientele that you're, you're going to see that are going to cause the problems. They are the types of clientele that are going to be standing, sitting here, shopping in University Heights, coming up, and I'm so excited that we're here tonight because I'm walking over as soon as we're done to get some pizza because I haven't eaten there yet. And, and we always eat at Stella's. I mean, we, we bring and we encourage our guests to go to Stella's. We specifically say that is our favorite place and it's an easy walk. So, so we're, you know, we're, those are, those are the types of things that VRBO people do and owners do is try to encourage their, their people and their guests and give them information about local business in order to allow them to utilize those for their own convenience as well as for the community as well. So, I'd be interested in hearing, I'm, I'll stay for the conversation. I want to hear kind of what the basis is for the, for that, your discussion tonight and what your thought process is with regard to that, that ordinance. But I would, I would ask and encourage you all to do two things. One, reconsider that, that idea of just banning those ordinance, having some other structure maybe to, to deal with VRBOs through a permit process, through, you know, some sort of other, other guidelines that you have. I know it doesn't fit well in the motel scheme or the landlord scheme that you have set up. So, maybe a third option for those, that would specifically regulate those. And the other one, if you do, do ban them, specifically allow that, I have a number of rentals already set up all the way through into, well into next year. They love the location. I've had people here last summer. They are already looking for, or last spring, they're already looking for space next year. So, we've had to, we've already booked them well into next year as well. Not on a weekly basis there, but sporadically. But I think my, it's into June or July of next year that we have already set up, including the traveling professor that's here. She's coming, wants to come back next, next year. And she just loves it here and she would hate to have to find someplace else at this point. So, anyway, that's, that's my, that's what I have.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
What is the, what's the length, your longest length of tenancy of VRBO?
That was our first one. The traveling nurse was here for five months. She was actually, that was, when we bought it, I think in 2016. She came in in December of 2016, stayed through, well, it might have been six months, it might have been May, through the end of May.
And are most of them generally under 30 days or over 30 days?
Probably most of them have been under 30 days. But about a year, we've owned it for about two years now. We bought it almost, just shy of two years ago. So, we've had a five or six-month lease with the traveling nurse, two months with the Hawkeye baseball player's parents, and the three months. So, about a year of that has been all long-term stays. The rest of it has been two weeks, anywhere from two weeks to a long weekend. The long weekends are generally those that have been, they're alumni coming in to, you know, visit with, with friends, see the sights around the area, hit, hit the Amanas, just revisit the campus and things like that.
So, most have, you'd say roughly your book of business is less than 30 days then?
Yeah, I could probably, while I'm waiting for the conversation on the ordinance, I could probably actually figure that out pretty quick looking at the, at my app. So, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the council tonight?
Paul Moore, 1000, 1006 Melrose Avenue. The first two football game weekends, I think things have been going smooth, at least for me. And one thing, previous years, you said you've had a lot of complaints. And I was just wondering how many and what they were, if any of the council people have received any complaints.
Well, we're going to talk some of that during police. And Nate happens to not be here right at the moment. And I think he'd be best to address it, but I've been hearing positive things more than negative things like you have, Paul.
Okay. Well, I greatly appreciate the police presence. They've been really, so you can see them and available and have a car parked on the street as well as the fire truck, which made a couple of emergency runs this last game. And we had an awful lot of ambulances go through Melrose Avenue. They weren't all local, they were out of state or out of town, but not out of state. But I got two, two issues. We addressed it last year, the university shuttle train having people come all the way into University Heights. And two of the officers were there, and I pointed out to them and told them to have Nate look at it this last game, and I don't know if he did, but the red-bearded officer that was there, I didn't get his name. But the whole point is trying to keep pedestrians on the sidewalk and out of the street. And you fill up that whole north sidewalk of the bridge, people trying to go east, everybody's walking the street to go west. That's a public safety nuisance. If an ambulance comes down or something, you get some kook that's drunk, wipes out some people, it'll be after the fact. The other thing, I keep requesting a patch for the crosswalk on Melrose Avenue. I don't know if you people ever go down there, but I see it and drive over it every day. And I don't understand why we can't get a smooth patch put on the sidewalk when it's a depression, broken concrete, a risk of somebody tripping, trying to get across the street when they don't have enough time with the pedestrian crosswalk. We really should be preventative in taking care of our property instead of waiting until you get sued if somebody falls because they're usually dodging cars trying to get across the street.
Paul, where exactly is it on the?
We've been over this, Dottie.
I know, but tell me again because I've talked to Russ and we'll, we'll go through it again.
It's the same place, the eastbound lane on Melrose Avenue, at the west side of the stop sign, crosswalk from Golf View or my vacant lot over to Kosher Avenue corner. It's so obvious, I can't believe you don't know where it is.
I don't go down that way, but.
Anyway, another thing, I don't understand why we don't tar or crack. All the water from all the rain goes under the paving, erodes it and makes a worse problem, makes it more expensive. I don't understand why there isn't a little foresight in maintaining what we've got because our streets aren't that good to start with. And then I hope with these late games starting at 6:30 and 7:30, I doubt if everybody will be off the lots by 11:59. I hope you can show a little common sense and leniency there. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We'll try and address some of these things during different reports tonight. Would anyone else like to speak? Hi. Welcome.
I'm short, so I have to do this.
Yes, you're short.
Hi, my name's Megan Bigness Bradley. I live at 1407 Oak Crest Avenue. And I'm kind of here as a result of a whole lot of coincidences. I'll admit that I don't always follow every city council meeting, but I happened to catch last month's meeting. And I've been hearing a lot about, of course, the Swisher Tract, which I think is such a wonderful and exciting opportunity for our town. So, I just wanted to come and give a little bit of support to some of the ideas that I heard last month. So, I have to say that the other coincidence besides having, happened to have seen the meeting and that being kind of fresh in my mind, is that I've been walking around a lot lately with, not, I was not here for all the rain, but it's been really lovely. And I've had such a great time this summer walking and meeting so many people in town, some of which are University Heights residents and some of whom are not. But people seem to always be so happy and so friendly when they're walking in our community. And it just sort of struck me and made me think what a great, great opportunity this park is. So, one of the things that I did want to sort of identify and why I wanted to be here tonight is I want to say that, you know, I think one of the great things about having lived in University Heights for the last 14 years is that I've seen so much change here, the vast majority of which I think is really, really wonderful and progressive for our town. And I think that there are always kind of competing voices in University Heights about development and what that means and what it should be in University Heights. And in this particular case, I want to say that I really think that we should encourage some form of development for this park beyond leaving it as a completely natural space. That said, I want to come back to those walks that I take. So, one of the things that I'm sure you all will recognize about our town when you walk around is that you see people of all kinds, a lot of diverse age groups, little tiny kids all the way up to elderly, people of a lot of different abilities, people of all different athletic or non-athletic states. But the important thing is, is that with the very little that I know about that land, what I can tell you is that a lot of those people wouldn't be able to use that, that area the way that it sits. So, it's going to require some kind of intervention. And I wouldn't stand here and say by any means that I'm an expert on any of that. I do know that I probably have some ideas, and I'm sure everyone else in town has ideas about what that should be as well. So, I did want to lend some support to the idea that we should potentially hire some sort of consultancy or at least have some public forums to say, hey, what does everyone in University Heights want for this space? Because ultimately, it's going to be a place where all of our families, all of our neighbors can enjoy, you know, where even over the last 14 years, University Heights, when it first started, was the fringes of town. And now we are completely surrounded, and it takes forever to get out to a real big park. This is such a wonderful thing. And I think it's also such a terrific opportunity to be a great neighbor to the people who share our community with us, especially, as you mentioned, those who are over at University of Iowa hospitals and clinics who are going through really rough times. And to have a green space like that available to them where they could go out and walk and be outside of concrete and walls and just have that ability to breathe some fresh air and have it be accessible to them and also their family members is something that I think that we could all be proud of in the future. So, I just hope that, that we can all get together as a community and, and talk about what we think the best path forward is. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Hi.
Juan Pablo Roquet, 416 Ridgeview Avenue. Wanted to speak in person in favor of the anti-discriminatory profiling ordinance. This is, racial profiling is something that I experience myself, and I think sometimes it's important to see someone's face when you're considering an ordinance, someone whose experience is. Didn't happen here, it happened when I lived in Northern Virginia. It happened more than once. I think if you talk to people of color, especially who lived in certain parts of the country, you will hear similar stories. I'm happy to talk to some of you later if you want to hear exactly what happened to me. I think it's, it's something important to do, especially given the current national and state context. If you have situations where people feel like this is happening, you have a lack of trust, end up with a lack of trust with the police force, and that's really unfortunate because, especially because it doesn't affect the majority of police officers. It's typically a bad apple that you run into. So, I think it's a critical part of making a professional police department is to make it very clear that these are the rules of the game and that they're permanent. It's not something that's just in a manual, it's something that's going to stick around. I read the ordinance. I know it's coming with, it's originally from the ACLU and supported by the NAACP too. So, that's, gives me comfort. I've read it also, and I think it has some key elements that provide a lot of safeguards. One is the Community Review Board, which I think is important from a sense of accountability for one-off cases, so situations that may not represent what happens all the time, but maybe there's some bad situation that happens and that's where, that's going to be useful to have some outside perspective on what happened, not just keep it internal. Second, I think the statistics are useful to identify patterns of things that may not be necessarily really bad, but there was a recent study in North Carolina, for example, looking at searches during police, during traffic stops and the outcomes of those, and there were significant disparities throughout the state. And this was only found out through statistics. Now, none of these involve, you know, violence or any big issues that would end up in the news, but overall, you could see patterns. So, I think those two items are, are useful, and I think it's useful to have something that goes beyond trusting in the, whoever happened to be the current people in our police department, especially in a police department like ours where there's a lot of contact with people from many different places that quickly go through town and where we had a lot of turnover too. So, even if everyone currently employed is fine, we don't know what things might look like in five years. And there's no blood test for figuring out if somebody's going to discriminate or not. So, you just find out after the fact. So, I think it's just, to me, it's a basic issue of fairness and justice that if you are a low-abiding citizen, you should have an equal chance of being stopped by the police or, and that just the way you look or the way you speak should not lead to additional action by, by the police. Thanks.
Thank you, JP. Would anyone else like to speak tonight?
I have some letters.
Okay. Oh, Chris has a couple of things.
I was given these by Sylvia, and I apologize if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. This is from John in Dorothy Wiston. We are trying to do this in the middle of packing for our return flight, so it will be brief. As the council has been informed, we are very unfortunate, excuse me, we had a very unfortunate experience with the UHPD when our Latina housekeeper and her African-American boyfriend were stopped without probable, probable cause or reasonable suspicion in U-Highs. Both Dorothy and I were bothered by the unsympathetic wall of denial that we faced when speaking with the officer and the acting chief. At that point, we did not know where to turn with our complaints, the mayor, the whole council. Fortunately, the charges were dropped and we just let it go. Now that this issue has resurfaced, we do want to register our strong support for a citizen review board. If it had existed at the time, it could have prompted a prompt and objective review of the incident. Our thanks to you and the council for taking so seriously this issue of such local and national import. The next one I have is from a Harvey Harrison. I understand that on Tuesday evening, your council will take up consideration on an ordinance to ban racial profiling in your city. I encourage you to adopt the ordinance and take the lead in Iowa on this important issue. I am aware of your actions because I have spent the last four years working in my home community of Des Moines to end racial profiling. We are moving slowly with significant resistance from the Des Moines Police Department and apathy from the wider white community. The consequences of the failure of my city to take leadership on this issue is clearly reflected in the recent incident involving two white police officers and two young African-American men. I encourage you to watch the video about the stop, and he does list a URL which I will share with everyone later. The ordinance that you are considering was drafted by the ACLU of Iowa. It is a model that is straightforward. It addresses the core issues that are held up and discussed in the Obama Administration Task Force Report on 21st Century Best Practices for Police Departments. I encourage you to take a look at the executive summary of that report, which was released in 2015. The statute also addresses the problem that has been highlighted by the work that Chris Barnum has done in three communities in Iowa. His studies in Davenport, Dubuque, and Iowa City highlight the disproportionality of enforcement against police of, people of color. His work is consistent with all of the other literature and studies on this problem. As I'm sure you know, Iowa is among the worst states in terms of disproportionate incarceration of people of color. I think of this status as a continuing reminder that in spite of our proud history on many issues of ending bias in our laws, we have a long way to go. While I'm not a part of your committee, community, I am hopeful that you will take leadership on this issue and provide a model for my community and the rest of my beloved state of Iowa. Over the course of the past five years, I have done a great deal of work on this issue of racial profiling, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have concerning this issue. Thank you for taking up this issue, and I look forward to your leadership. The next one I have is from Laura Stunts of Iowa City. Dear Council, thank you for your service to your fellow citizens of University Heights. I live in Iowa City, but it's been brought to my attention that you may be considering removing the Citizens Review Board from your proposed anti-profiling ordinance. I encourage you to persevere in requiring a Citizens Review Board in your ordinance to provide proper oversight for the review of the implementation of this ordinance. The next one is from a Bridget Fagan Rayburn, community organizer with the Iowa Cities, Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. Dear Council members, Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement urges your support for the Anti-Discriminatory Policing Practices Ordinance, Ordinance Number 235. For years, Iowa CCI has worked with individuals who have experienced racial profiling by the police. We've heard stories from individuals across the state and have helped them file complaints with their respective police departments. It is clear from our history of helping individual file complaints is that they do not feel they get a fair hearing if they report a complaint directly to the department because it is an internal investigation. There is also a fear of retaliation that nothing will be done. Individuals who want to report their complaints to an impartial third party, excuse me, individuals want to report their complaints to an impartial third party. We are especially. We are especially excited about the Citizen Review Board in the proposed ordinance. Racial profiling can impact individuals for years to come, from mental trauma to a small charge that could put a young person in the criminal justice system, and the numbers back up the stories. For example, Iowa is ranked second worst in disparities for drug arrests. Iowa also has the fourth worst disparity for incarceration of African-Americans in our prison system. It starts with a simple stop that can lead to further consequences. We've been working to pass legislation for years statewide, but we do not know how long that could take. A great step is for local municipalities to start taking action. We need to do whatever we can to combat racial profiling in our state. In addition, on September 15, 2017, the Department of Justice announced it would not be pursuing or scrutinizing local police departments. Now Iowa cities need to address this issue. Adopting the anti-racial profiling ordinance would go a long way in addressing racial profiling locally and shows that the University Heights treats all people with respect and dignity, no matter who they are or the color of their skin. We urge you to vote yes for the anti-discriminatory policing ordinance. This is from Donald Baxter, 316 Ridgeview Avenue. I would like to express my support of University Heights' proposed ordinance number 235 and urge its quick adoption. My understanding that this is a boilerplate legislation to specifically make racial profiling illegal in University Heights, and it's been drafted by the ACLU. This legislation represents best practices adopted by local police departments across the United States. University Heights must get ahead of this issue. Perception is reality for those who drive through or live in University Heights. I notice as I bike through our town that of the traffic stops I personally witness that one out of three involve persons of color. Our regional 93% white population makes me wonder why so many persons of color are stopped here. As I bike through our town, most of the drivers I see speeding, not coming to full stops at stop signs or running our town's two traffic lights are not only white, but evidenced by expensive vehicles clearly affluent. Some are even residents of University Heights. While I know that the plural of antidote does not make statistics, it's hard to deny what I see. Keeping statistics would help dissuade this perception of racial profiling if untrue. Our community has a public relations problem that while I personally suspect is somewhat inaccurate, it must still be addressed. I've been told by numerous friends and acquaintances who are persons of color that they believe University Heights Police engages in profiling, and I am hardly positioned to deny their personal truths. I know black residents of Iowa City who specifically will not drive through University Heights. I know that some will say that our town is too small to be burdened by the responsibility that such an ordinance may involve. University Heights is surrounded by jurisdictions who will assume this responsibility, so we must do this as well. Additionally, the city should do a better job of educating and explaining why traffic laws need to be enforced strongly in a town where so many of our citizens walk and bike to work and school. University Heights is not a speed trap, but a city that enforces traffic laws and speed limits that are clearly marked. That being said, enforcement must be fairly distributed, and University Heights should be prepared to prove this. University Heights should mark its boundaries, specifically the western boundary where the eastbound speed limit on Melrose drops 10 miles per hour to 25 more clearly. Perhaps perhaps this boundary should be a permanent speeding measure sign like the signs that have been recently installed on Governor's Street southbound. This portable speed limit sign being used in town seems to work to slow drivers where it is being used. University Heights should also write more warnings, especially to drivers whose records do not previously reflect records of traffic offenses. Traffic tickets weigh much more heavily on less economically fortunate drivers, and law enforcement should not lose sight of this. Prove to residents and those traveling through University Heights that safety, not revenue, is our primary goal. The last one is from a Virginia Meyer in Lone Tree. Please pass the anti-racial profiling ordinance. This is the right thing to do and will help give other cities the incentive to follow your lead. I am a former resident on U of U Heights, and I am very proud to see that the city council moved towards greater justice and equality for all. Racial profiling is a problem in Iowa, and it's time to examine our policies and try to remedy this injustice. Thank you and all citizen leaders for the hard work you do to make our communities better for all of us.
Is that it?
That is it.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the council? You would? Thank you. You both would. Very nice.
Hi, my name is Betty Andrews. I am the president of the Iowa-Nebraska NAACP. And listening to the letters, they cover a lot of the things that I had in my prepared statement, and I will just say ditto to most of those. In 2014, I founded a, an event called the Iowa Summit on Justice and Disparities a few years back. But in 2014, our national office at the NAACP came in with their criminal justice chair and introduced the movement that you're hearing now from a lot of the ACLU and a lot of the people that are working with racial profiling. We invited the ACLU to join us in this process, and we did come up with legislation. That legislation, we have been working through the Iowa Legislature around it and have had varying levels of success and are still working through that. But what we want to say here, first of all, I want to thank you all for considering this ordinance this evening. It is extremely important. Racial profiling is injurious to citizens and cities. And so, being standing here, being an African-American woman who has dealt with not only being racially profiled, but also dealing with it with the men in my life that have often experienced that. I also just recently hosted a press conference. You heard the conversation about the two young men in Des Moines addressing that issue and addressing the challenges that they faced just by being in a situation where they were terrorized, and they were absolutely terrorized, and then also provoked by police. And so, standing here today with the president of the Iowa City NAACP, and then also, I know I'm stepping back, but Chief Nathan Peterson is also standing with us in support of asking you to pass this ordinance tonight. We understand that there are a number of, you know, minor things that have come up and that need to be addressed. One of the things that we wanted to do with Chief Peterson's support is offer one amendment, and that would be to the number of people on the Citizens Review Board, bringing that number up to four, so that there is five, and giving an opportunity for one additional citizen or person, law enforcement, not specific, but wanting to look at five people on that Citizens Review Board. And then also, as the NAACP, I do want to offer support, being the leaders in terms of bringing a lot of this movement. And because of all of the issues that we've seen nationally, and then looking at Iowa being number one in the nation for 20 years, for 20 years in our disparities, and then recently now we're at number three for the disparity between blacks and white in our criminal justice system. And so, and that statistic comes directly from a project called The Sentencing Project. Interestingly enough, I'm offering that the NAACP through the Iowa Summit on Justice and Disparity does have training and a number of other opportunities there. The executive director from The Sentencing Project will be here October 16 for that summit. And so I just wanted to kind of put that out there is that we have resources around racial profiling that could help and also around setting up Citizens Review Boards and those things. And so if you would pass this ordinance this evening, we could certainly kind of at the administrative level, help you implement this in a way that would be fair and equitable and would be tailored to this community. So I would just really ask you, and if I could just get a confirmation from the back here that you guys are in support as well, we would encourage, urge, and plead with you to, you know, be a leader in Iowa. Doesn't matter, you know, whether you consider yourself small. I heard, you know, words like small and quaint, and that's awesome, but leadership is important no matter what size. So, thank you for that.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In recommending the Citizens Review Board composition and so, what sort of things have you been involved in for penalties? Because how would you implement, you know, some kind of censure?
Sure. So those are some of the things that the NAACP on both the national and state and local level can assist with. In particular, I know that the ordinance does mention that if there are any type of, I mean, if there is a recommendation from the review board, so the review board can make that recommendation, and if there is a recommendation, there's an opportunity.
I just wondered what the parameters might be, because, you know, I come from law enforcement, so I'm curious.
Sure. So, I mean, within the, within law enforcement, I guess I would say yet to be determined. I don't want to, like, specifically be nailed down at this point, but that's something that it would be, and the chief would definitely be able to weigh in on that as well.
Okay.
So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, great. Thanks.
Would you, you want to speak? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Okay, we'll keep moving on. And first is the committee report Dottie has for streets and sidewalks.
Yeah, I'm going to go right to my, well, and I just want to say in response to Paul's comment, as far as streets and sidewalks are concerned, all I ever hear since I have been on streets and sidewalks is we don't have money for that. We don't have it in the budget. We don't have. And I'm thinking, you know, this is such an important priority and safety factor that, good Lord, we should be able to come up with the money. And if we're looking at developing the Swisher tract, we should go back to the bonding and not take any money from the city for that. That's my position on it. Now, I don't have a report per se, but I have a resolution. Needless to say, I was very.
Would you want to make a motion? You want to make a motion for your resolution?
I'm going to make a motion for the resolution.
Start the conversation.
Yes.
You want to motion for it? You sent the resolution around, and then we'll discuss it.
I think they got it on the web.
Yeah, we did. So you're.
I mean, I completed it, I think, at, you know.
Yeah. So you motioned for consideration of 1842?
Yes.
To clean up Triangle Park. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Virginia. Okay, discussion.
Okay, in reply to the comments I've heard from the Triangle Park, the major complaint was that it was too much money. And so I've thought about what are the priorities here? What really needs to be done to put some lipstick on this pig? And I want to thank Lisa and Virginia for going over and trying to take out some of the weeds and debris behind the trees. But I would like, and especially because this is part of the visioning project, the entire community over the course of one year, meeting every month, decided that the vision project would agree that landscaping and redoing the Melrose scape was one priority, the first one. And after that, the Triangle Park, I think, was the third thing. And so the whole community has worked over this, so it's not as though this is a new idea. So we want to create a more inviting and usable Triangle Park. It's very visible. That was the reason that Rotary was interested, because it's on the thoroughfare, and people go back and forth. They see this park when they come into the city, they see the park when they leave. And I think that we need to make it pristine and attractive. And the first step on doing this and rehabilitating is to clean up the space with minimal input and cost. And so I have figured out a way that we can remove the decaying shelter and out of there completely. We can take out the water fountain, which is decadent, and cap it and secure the waterline. And that, I could do this with 500, excuse me, $5,000. I think there might have been a typo that it said six. I can do it with, well, no, it's not, it's in the resolution not to exceed six, and I meant that to be five. It was, I didn't edit it. It was very late in the morning, AM. So I can do that for $5,000. And I have the money from my Marietta savings on the resurfacing because we got a better deal than we thought we were going to get, and the $1,000 from the community fund. And so I'm asking for a vote for approval of this. Many people have expressed to me how sad they were that the park was turned down so blatantly, especially because the businesses along Melrose there. Paul has expressed his concern about the appearance of the streets and the sidewalks, the safety factor. The development of the Marriott and the entree onto Melrose is very important in terms of the new comprehensive plan vision. We're looking at some designation of commercial area down around Stella's and the dental offices and the businesses there. So it's, this is the first step. It won't cost the city anything, and I'm just asking tonight for your permission to begin to do something.
My first question is why use money from roads when we still have $20,000 from the Marriott Hotel to be spent here?
Well, but because you've told me that, I can't have it. And so I thought, I can find a way that I can do it without it. Now I talked to Jim, and he was very surprised, he was disappointed, in fact, that we weren't beginning to use the money and to put something into that park. So.
I don't recall giving that direction, but if that is the impression.
Well, I talked to him. I'm sorry.
Correct. So my, I would prefer that we use the 20,000 from the Marriott to do this work.
Instead of my money?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would motion and support an amendment to your resolution.
Okay.
To exceed 6,000, a sum compromised from the green space contribution of the Marriott Hotel.
So it would be 26 or 21, maybe 21,000? Would that be better? Okay, I'd amend it to say not to exceed.
Wait, no. We're still talking about 5,000 or?
I know, but then Virginia suggested that we go to.
Change the funding.
I'm not saying we.
I understand what Virginia said.
Okay.
Yes, but use that money, 5,000 of that money, not add that to.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm okay with that.
So is 4,000, is it 4,000 from that money and 1,000 from the community fund? Or are we going to do, or you think?
Well, I think it would be nice if I could use that 4,000 that we're not using on Marietta for another street project, but that would be my, that would be my preference. But, you know, if I'm forced to use it for this, I would be inclined to use it for this because we're covering Marietta, but there's more I could do with the street money. So I'm happy with whatever you all decide.
Well, what, can I ask, Josiah, do we know what the cost of this crosswalk issue would be? And is this a good time to respond to Paul's questions about ceiling?
Well, the crosswalk, I know the pavers would be, the best price I could get was 8,000 from obviously landscaping.
Just the patch?
No, he's just talking about.
Something in the pothole.
Oh, the potholes. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, the cost for rust patches.
So, I mean, the cost for Russ to patch it is-
Can you talk in the microphone, though?
It's $35 for Russ's time, city maintenance is about $35 per hour, I think.
Approximately.
Approximately.
But why, why isn't it getting done well, though? I mean, is there something we need to do to make sure that it's not backward where it is now?
Well, the entire panel needs to be replaced, the patch is just trying to get us to that next street project. Russ can do that, but he's going to have to do it more often on this one, or we need to bring in pelling to do the patch in place of, in place of Russ.
Do you have a certain recommendation outside of, I guess, the policy decision? Do you, I mean, in terms of value for our investment, what do you think is the better option, understanding that we will be, you know, redoing the street at some point?
And about how much would you estimate pelling would, would cost based on the other things that he's, they've done?
I guess, I want to know, can you lay out our options, options one, two, or three, and just tell us how long they last as well? No one's asked about how long they would last.
Yeah. I think the, I think the patch that Russ has done so far was probably eight weeks ago, so, about two months at that spot.
Yeah.
That, that's the expectation, so, if we're, if we're okay moving off that and going to pelling and paying more to get something done, I'd, I'd be fine with that, and I'm sure Russ would, too.
What's the something more? Can you describe that? Is it a panel replacement that would be something more?
Well, they would be able to come in with an asphalt patch with some additional equipment, probably make it deeper and make it last longer.
Okay, because if that's-
Not, not forever, but-
Is this patch similar to the one we had to repair up there by the University Club? That pit of where everybody was falling in the, on the north side of the sidewalk? Do you remember that?
Not exactly, but it's just an asphalt patch, road, pothole patch.
Okay, because we used pelling, I think, for that.
Then it probably was the same type of-
I assume there's some sort of efficiencies if they're coming all the way over with that sort of equipment to do potentially multiple areas at the same time? I'm assuming that, I might not be correct. Is that the case, and if so, is there, are there other areas that we should hit with this more intense asphalt patch machine?
Prob, probably it's, it's worth looking at. If they're, if they're big enough, you know, what's, what's good for Russ is, is small spots, he can effectively go and hit those, both with the material and with his, you know, time and cost. So, when you bring in the bigger equipment, they handle bigger areas, so if you have them start going around and doing little tiny spots, it's not as effective, so, back to answer your question, I, we do usually try and see what else we can combine into that, so, if that's okay, I would do that as well.
And what's the cost to just replace the panel completely, approximately? I don't think it's going to last another four years, like, I don't think the patch of any kind is going to last another four years until 2022, when it gets reopened.
Yeah, that sidewalk, it's so busy over there especially, that I think we need to-
The biggest challenge right there is, is traffic control.
Paul, come up to the microphone.
At this point in the football season, it's tough to get in there to replace it.
Okay.
So, the patch is probably better, because that is essentially closing off the lane of Melrose at this point.
Is Pella the only company that does asphalting?
No.
Okay, good.
We probably got a better deal, because we do so much business with them, but maybe, I don't know.
Well, we haven't looked. I'd like to see West University Heights taken care of, there are very large, five, eight-foot wide circumference holes that are up and down Oak Crest-
That we looked at.
Highland, yeah.
Yeah.
And Monroe, Mahaska, Kosher. I think we even have some work that Russ may want to revisit to make sure that as, you know, the degradation of his work that he previously did isn't in jeopardy in some of these, because they still look like inundation, or indentations. But, yeah, we have some really interesting situations.
So, I would just, in case you're wondering, when I talk with Russ, I know, Dottie, you talk with him, my direction to him is, hey, you know, every so often, we need to go back around and check spots that you've done in the past, and so, it's sort of an, it's not like a, I did that, and now I don't do it again until somebody says anything.
Paul, you wanted to add something?
I'm no expert in paving, but the way you can see this is cracked and settling, and you put a patch over the top, the number of semis and heavy vehicles we have, there's a vibration, it breaks it loose from a flexible bouncing surface underneath the patch. And so, whether Russ does it or pelling does it, I think you're just wasting money. It needs concrete there, it's an important intersection, it's in the middle of a crosswalk, and it's where everybody has to pull up and stop, so there's movement and friction against all the paving there. Your panels move up and down as these semis and heavy loaded trucks go through there. You got to bite the bullet here and do it right.
Yeah.
So, what's your recommendation?
Well, you know, we've sort of started that process in this section of Melrose, so, a couple of years, we've done, like, pieces of that, moving up the street closer to the intersection, which has helped a lot, I think, because what we found is, we'll do certain panels, but the rest of the paving around isn't like, like, like now, we build a new street, we reconstruct the street, the grade is compacted, then we have drainable rock, several, six inches or eight inches, laid on top of that, compacted, so we got the base, you got the drainage, you got the drain tiles, now the concrete goes on top, so when we, and this has helped, because we've been moving down and doing whole stretches, but the, when we get to that Melrose streetscape and the widening and widening on that side, it will all be like that, but, in the meantime, even, even when we do concrete patches, we can try and fix that one spot, but like Paul said, you know, everything moves around and they're all connected, so, it will not always last forever, but, anyway, the point is, that, that's something we're trying to do by moving down and doing the whole width all the way across.
Didn't you just say the problem with replacing it now is football season? And then it's winter? I don't know. Is that true?
That's one of the issues with the concrete replacement, is the, is the closing off of the street for four days or so.
Well, we could do it at the end of this four-week football stretch, couldn't we? Because there's, is there a bye season or some, or is-
Bye week is right after.
They're, they're after the fourth game, I believe, you have two. We could, we could look into that.
Putting football aside, would that be your recommendation? If it's not for the, the football timing issue, would it be to do a new concrete piece? Or am I hearing you say even a new concrete piece is not ideal, because you're not doing the whole area?
Or what about over on George? What did you do there? That's asphalt?
That was a different street, yeah, that was an overlay.
Okay.
Asphalt overlay.
Okay.
Well, the idea was to, to patch this more permanently, to get us to the next street project where it could replace more than just the one panel.
Mm-hmm.
But it, it also comes down to cost, so I think, I think if we're, if we're okay going with pelling or somebody who can do a, a better repair job, and then we could also look at, what would, what would you provide us as cost to replace it with concrete?
So, I think the council's asking to look into that, both things, and, right?
I'd like to ask that he also look, if we're bringing in Pella, economy of scale is really important, so that we can get good value out of a big, larger company that generally is priced a bit higher, especially if we're not going to complete this contract. And West University Heights has significant disrepair of streets that I think the city maintenance hasn't touched, because it seems appropriate that a big company like Pella step in and do it. I'd like to have a two-step approach to this. Number one, take care of the issue that's been identified tonight, but also have Pella tell us how much it would cost to repair some of the other Oak Crest, Highland, Mahaska, Monroe, Ridgeview-
Marietta.
And Kosher streets that are involved. And these are pretty large, you know, circumference of, of, or diameter, you know, disrepair, they're holes, there are, some of them are as deep as maybe an inch and a half, if not two altogether.
I'm, sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just saying, and I'm also concerned about waiting, you know, a whole additional month to even get this kind of going. I, I, do you have a sense of, I mean, if, if we could, I don't know, maybe discuss authorizing up to, you know, a certain amount, do you have any estimate as to what we're talking with these options?
I, I didn't put them together for tonight.
I mean, even ballpark at all?
You know, the pan, the panel replacement costs are, it, it seems way out of whack, because you got to bring somebody in for one panel, and they got to set up traffic control all the way through town. It's maybe like 10, 12. I think the asphalt patch is probably, you could probably bring them in and have them do that, and several others perhaps, for like, maybe one or two, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, it's a totally different operation, one is just patching overlay.
I, I'm inclined to want to bring in the patching, to, you know, and authorize maybe up to, I mean, if Dottie's, you know, up to the 4,000 to get these fires put out, and I don't think that takes off the table, the idea that we would do something more severe.
Oh, I think up to 10, I, I would give him 10.
He's looking at the Marietta money.
If that, if you're going to-
No, I, what are we looking at, Marietta or?
Marietta money. The 4,000 few savings from the Marietta and approving up to 4,000.
For this, for this-
That'd be a good start, don't you think? For, for these patching areas up west.
Yeah, if we could do some sort of quid pro quo with my park.
We already did, we already discussed that.
If we can save 20 for, from the hotel.
Josiah?
As a start, yeah, as a start, I was thinking we would take four from the, from the, from Jim and Greg, that money, give it to the, to Dottie's resolution to replace the Marietta money, put the Marietta money toward putting out these fires in terms of the potholes around town, having them done right, economies of scale, you know, at the same time with the bigger machinery. That was my thought.
Yeah, I, I don't think Russ can handle this, I think it has to.
And I think that's the right thing to do, and I'd like to see somebody keeping a schedule of these changes done, kind of like what we do with the street inspections, I mean, the sidewalk inspections, and when we send out notices to homeowners to repair their sidewalk panels, I think we need to have Russ develop a schedule of when he's checking segments of the city for these and any other issues. I think that would be a good process for him to have, and to assist council in allocating funds.
So, Nick's going to put that in a form of a motion of the 4,000 from-
Well, we already have a motion that was not seconded.
I, I know, but that's the Triangle Park. I'm trying to get the street issue.
Can we put them in the, I don't know if we can put them in the same resolution?
Yeah, just put the streets in, the streets alone.
Yeah, keep it separate.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because we want to keep track of how much the park's going to cost.
Yeah.
That means we go back to the motion, which was amended for funding line?
I know, we don't have a second yet.
We don't have a second on that.
And I'm going to work on that, but I thought maybe since we were talking about the streets, we just do the streets right now.
Dottie and Virginia did the first one. We now have an amendment that Sylvia stated, we don't have a second for the amendment.
And the second is?
Not to exceed $6,000 and use the developer's contribution.
So, is it six or five? We have two numbers.
Well, yeah, and Virginia has said-
I guess I would motion that we-
I would just say, give a flexibility of 1,000, if expenses fluctuate up or down, because she can't get things done right away, and it's later in the season, I just worry that we're so tight.
So, not to exceed 6,000?
Well, I guess where I'm going with this is that we have 20,000 to spend on this park from the Marriott, I think they really wanted it to be spent here, so that it spruces up that corner for their future project. I like this scaled-back approach, I do think we need to look at adding a bench if we're taking the shelter out, and I, my personal view is that I don't want to take out the water fountain unless we're going to replace it, I think that's a valuable asset.
Yeah, I just think a water fountain is really unsafe, and it's going to look gross if we take everything else away.
I agree that it doesn't look great, but I don't know what is unsafe about it.
Well, but there's no point in having it there, because if, you're not going to be using the park yet as a park, per se, and the bench would, you know, be someplace you could sit while you're waiting for the bus or something.
I don't know that we need to-
But-
I would say put in a bench, keep the water fountain.
Okay, if, but if we're going to go beyond just taking it out, then we're going to have to put money in for the footing and the sanding and the concrete, because you just can't put a bench on the dirt. So, that's going to build in extra money. So, what my goal was here, first step, just taking these things away, and then-
Back to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I get that, sure.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for starting to put benches or-
So, take it away, you keep going with that thought, you're going to take these things away with this money.
Right, and then, I, I would be amenable to putting a bench up, or even an umbrella-type shelter, like a gazette, like a, like a little oriental, you know, just, you know, hoop, like a, a curve over the top, over the bench. But it's going to take footings and concrete work, that's, that's what I'm saying, it's just not putting it on some dirt. So, I'm amenable to whatever you will agree to let me begin to do.
So, Sylvia's amendment was, can you say it again?
Not to exceed $6,000 and use the developer's contribution.
And I was just amending the funding line, it doesn't amend the scope of the work that's being proposed, so let's take a look.
And so, we might have to also add the scope of the work.
Well, the scope is set out as in the resolution, so if you want it bigger-
I understand, I just don't know if council's on board with that scope.
Okay, okay.
Do you, so do you see some loss in efficiency in terms of taking this stuff out before we have something to replace it?
Well, it would be nice to have done, you know, everything, but you've decided, I couldn't do that, and so, I thought, then I will go down to bare basics where we would have to begin, and then, we can slowly add back as you feel there's enough money there. And that was why, you know, I would like to see the, the concrete, or the pavers with the, the pathway from Kosher to Melrose, and the bedding and the foundation basis for a bench, a bench that would be, you know, down in the, that it would be a metal bench secured on a concrete pad, I mean, so that it's not, so it's the beginning of the fix, you know, with, I don't want just to throw something up there that we're going to have to take off again temporarily. So, that's why I was going slowly, because I thought that way, you know, there would be more understanding on just getting the groundwork done. But if you want to go further than that, I'm amenable to it, it's just going to take a little bit more money than the 6,000.
Okay, so-
And I've accounted for five, and that was, that I'm, that was a-
So, the scope right now is removing the shelter and removing the aged water fountain and securing the line.
And securing the line, and putting the, there's a control thing there now on the side of the bench, and that will, Jim will do the, the water work, because he's a plumber, and he said then he could get some kind of fake rock or something and put, hide this, hide that mechanism under the rock, so.
So, this is your cleanup plan, so.
Then if you want to go ahead and do footings and all of that, and a path, concrete, or my pavers, you know, that will take another, you know, 8,000 for the-
What I heard council say is they're concerned about removing a water fountain if it's not-
No one uses it, and they're not going to be using it until it's-
I use it.
I've seen people use it, believe it or not.
Until it's replaced, I mean, nobody's going to be in there without a shelter or anything.
I use it when I go for walks.
I'm sorry?
I use it when I go for walks.
Well, I don't think most people do, because it's-
Lot of bikers stop and fill up their water bottles there, and you got to remember that water system feeds the flower bed.
Yeah, it's secured, Jim said he would secure it.
Don't take that away.
No, it won't be.
Always good to have access-
Because they're- Because there will be, there will be,
On that property.
There will be a new, there will be a new water fountain, just like the one on Tower Park.
Well, I guess I want to make a motion to have the water fountain remain until it is going to be replaced.
I, I feel like part of this discussion is based on kind of maybe a miscommunication about the previous plan. I mean, I, I would be more in favor of a plan that would take us, you know, instead of just tearing it down, I mean, I understand the idea maybe of having a blatant canvas to work on.
Yes.
But, but I also hate to tear things down and just have it be kind of in that in-between stage for, for too long. I, I would be interested in authorizing some amount of money that's greater than this to get to a place, maybe along the lines of what you're talking about. But I would prefer to maybe go even a little bit further. The bigger, the biggest problem I had with the previous plan was just the, the huge cost of it. So if, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but maybe some scaled down, you know, replacement of these things instead of just tearing them out for now.
Here's what I would like, and that is, I'd like, I like what we're doing right now, which is giving some flexibility to a project that needs to be undertaken. I mean, that area needs beautification. It's been neglected or, you know, we haven't had the funds to do it. Now we do. So our circumstances have changed. I think from what I recall, a fountain cost about 10,000 approximately for the last go-round. I would feel comfortable if we were to replace a $10,000 water fixture, add a new bench and clean up this area and leave the pavement and all that, you know, at a later time when you can probably lift your apparatus, which is your fountain.
Well, the, the problem is that the water fountain would be on pavers when we redo the, the, and Josiah would have to tell us how much extra because you just can't put it in. You've got to have the footings, the sodding, the concrete.
Can you address that, Josiah?
And you can't do, and you can't put the pavers in yet if you're not going to authorize them, so.
Well, assuming, assuming you want to pursue the, the concept that was previously talked about. I mean, it had the pavers, it had the sidewalk, it had the shelter, it had all that.
Without the, if we didn't do.
So if you just did a bench and a drinking fountain now, you know, the question is, well, where do you want it? And does it need to fit into that plan or are you going to change your mind? So that's the risk, obviously, and you put it in, you might say, well, now we don't really want to do that. So you could have some rework, you know.
So the, the pavers bid was around eight with a special consideration for my rotary project. And then Josiah estimated the cost of the footings and all of that because when you tear out this concrete, you've got to put a foundation for something if you're going to put in something like a water fountain.
I mean, I do feel like it'd be best to have pretty good long-range concept agreed on, you know, so that when you start undertaking the pieces, they're more or less where they're going to be.
So the first thing then?
That'd be, that would be the normal process is let's agree on where we're going to end up.
So would the first thing then be the pavers and the platform for, the platform for the bench and for the water fountain?
It just depends on where you want to end up, I guess. Is, is it going to be something different? I guess the first step, no matter what we do, is the demo, right?
Yeah, I guess, did you like without any, without all the bells and whistles? Did you like just the bench and the shelter and the path across? Because we have to connect Kosher with Melrose. And now it's that broken down concrete, so we were going to do the pavers.
I, I don't think I want to go ahead with pavers or with that particular plan. I would like a bench. I think leave the water fountain and don't commit to something right now.
You mean, leave that fountain now?
Yes. I do see people using it and I think for now, we, we make it look
So all you do is.
Better than it did.
All you do is take out the shelter then?
Take out the shelter, clean up some of the, do some seeding, do minimal.
Well, you're going to have to read, what are you going to put the bench, if you want to put a bench back down on there, what are you going to put it on?
Well, is there not a concrete pad there now?
Yep.
It's.
Yeah, I mean, there's a concrete pad now where the shelter is, so it's possible they could save it when they take the shelter down. If not, they could, you could pour a small pad.
You know, my concern all along here was, you know, not, not waste any money. If what we, if we have a plan, the Visioning Project approved, which was three times the cost that I gave you last week, if you all like that and the city like that, then I would think we would want to look at that and begin to build toward that rather than tear out this stuff we're putting in and put in new things. I think that's just throwing money away. So I'm just trying to be practical in terms of building here.
Well, I guess we could leave the shelter, leave the fountain, clean up the weeds and the landscaping.
Well, there's no point in doing landscaping because it looks like a pit now.
Well.
Well, clean it up a little.
In some ways, I feel like we should start, I, I mean, I appreciated the work that Dottie and Josiah did before. I think it, just that the budget was too large for, for me in that small of a space. I, I would like to almost be talking about what the budget is. Are we going to agree that it's going to be 21,000? You know, that we're going to want to put in that, and if it is, then it would seem to be potentially more efficient to just decide how we're going to develop it and do it now. If that's, I don't know if that's too much or not enough in terms of what the rest of the council's thinking.
I think that's what the whole point was supposed to be. Yeah, I'm perfectly comfortable saying, go spend 21,000.
Okay, because if that is the amount that we get this year.
But I just, I don't really want us replacing useful objects.
Would you, do you want?
I don't, I don't want to see us removing useful objects and not replacing them with anything. So I would like, if we can't afford a new water fountain with that budget, I would prefer that the old water fountain stay. I know it's not pretty, but it's useful.
So let me ask a clarifying question. Are we, are we allowing 20,000 plus the 1,000 from the community fund? Because as far as.
Is there something else we're supposed to be spending that money on?
Well, it's all for green space. So my, my question is, the developers said that they're willing and able to do a lump sum distribution of that entire commitment. So instead of waiting five years, you can now have 50,000. If we're going to be going up to 21,000, we might as well complete whatever else needs to be done. If it's pavers, let's do the pavers. If it's cement.
But part of the point was that we have another project coming and this is something that a number of people brought up. We're going to.
Well, there's money if you're.
And then we're going to have another streetscape project that's going to affect it.
No, the.
What we have done is we reverted back to the plan that
Well, I worked.
People said they.
I worked on the vision project on the streetscape as well as with Kent Ralston and Josiah on the grant. And so I know exactly what we're getting, what the plans were. And that, it didn't have anything to do with the park, except we're going to lose, I think, four or five feet on the Melrose side. So that is a non-issue. That's an absolute non-issue.
I mean, I remain rather uncomfortable spending 50,000 on a park that's small. I think 21,000 is an appropriate budget for that size park. I think that's what we should go for and I think we should leave the rest of the money to come in as it was already determined to come in.
Well, we could do.
Some of which will be spent by future councils on their priorities.
Well, Virginia, what we could do is do it in phases and do 20 this year and then do 10 next year and 10 the next year and just apportion it out that way. Because if you're talking about doing anything on Swisher, you've got the bonding option. And the fact the council cut that down to zipple was not my vote. And so you've got bonding available for Swisher, which is a huge, huge.
Bonding is not free money.
I, I know it isn't, but it's still some, a project, if everybody is on board for developing Swisher, then they take the cost, consequences of what that might be.
I, I just am wondering if anybody, including Dottie, if anybody's interested in seeing what this project could look like in, with a total budget of 21,000. If that's something that, you know, just more minimalistic, you know, kind of a basic.
We can do, I could work with Josiah again and bring something. If we approve it now, we approve the amount, then I will work with him and we will come up with something that fits within 21,000 for next meeting.
Yes.
I would like to see that, yeah.
Can it look more like what the original Visioning simple?
The original vision was very much, yeah, like the plan.
Do you also?
Not visually, it was not.
Do you also mean that circular thing in the middle? That's a planting area.
Not necessar, not necessarily, but what I liked about it, that the paving that they put in was simple. It was straight. It emphasized the triangle of Triangle Park, which I think is a very visually impactful thing.
And the only difference was that we put pavers out for, Josiah did this, for the water fountain and for, you know.
And it looked like.
Yeah, well, okay, we can take all that away.
In terms of.
Why don't, why don't, why don't we see what we can come up with for 21 and.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment too? There's another space that looks awful directly across the street there, adjacent to Two Lemer outside of their fence. There's a four-foot, maybe five-foot sidewalk and you can't get grass to grow on that median because it gets so much foot traffic and it gets just trampled down.
Is that on Lemer, you said?
It's on Kosher.
It's by Second.
It's adjacent to.
Two Lemer Court.
Is this the Craig's?
Yeah, adjacent to the, the right-of-way adjacent to the Craig's property is in terrible shape and so by the fence.
Where things on the other side, by the sidewalk.
No, it's the city portion. It's not from their parking cars. It's from foot traffic that goes down that block every single day.
That also was a complicated area because we had disputes as to whether cars.
I'm talking about the area between the street and the sidewalk, not the area between
Yeah.
sidewalk and the fence.
I think that's.
Anyway, there's another, that's green space. It could use some attention and maybe that's a place where we could spend a portion of the future 10,000 that's coming in to either put in some permeable pavers there or some landscaping or something to get that area to be not just bare dirt because you cannot grow grass.
Well, look.
Too much foot traffic.
Let's wait till we see the comprehensive plan because that development is part of that.
So Dottie, would you be amenable to tabling this resolution with a, with a revision to it? Because you're going to come back revising it for the next council meeting with an action plan addressing.
That's, that's fine with me. I just don't want it to be defeated again.
Okay, so Dottie, you made the motion and Virginia made the second of the original.
I could move.
We've got Dottie, Sylvia and Virginia.
And well, Sylvia's wasn't seconded.
Further motion.
Correct. And Virginia's wasn't seconded, so those are gone.
So that's gone.
Okay.
And we just have.
Do I need to second you?
Correct.
On the table is how I see it.
So does it need a second?
Yeah, so you just want to.
I, then I motioned that we tabled this until.
Just withdraw your motion.
Well, you just withdraw it. And does anybody object from Dottie withdrawing the motion?
No, I don't want to withdraw it. I want, I want consensus here so that I know it's okay to go ahead. Because if we're going to waste.
But Dottie, the original motion is your 1842 is this, so if you withdraw that, we'll start again.
Okay.
And then, and no one objects to that and you withdraw yours and no one objects, everyone agrees, okay. So now you want to make clarity here. So, and you want it in a motion, so the motion is that you and Josiah are going to.
We're going to work together and formulate a plan for
21,000.
Triangle Park for not to exceed 21,000.
And bring that back to the October meeting.
Counsel next month.
And there's a second?
Second.
Second by Nick, okay. Everyone's clear on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries.
Can I make another motion?
Sure.
Dear God, no.
Make another one.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city engineer to provide LL Pelling with direction to provide asphalt repairs to larger potholes around town at a cost to up, of up to 4,000 with the funds being used on the Mari, from the Marietta savings.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Lisa. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
May I make a motion? In part of Josiah's report, which I hope all of you read, he makes reference to a financial report for streets, uh, street expenditures that are due at the end of September to the state of Iowa. Josiah has looked it over, Steve Coole has looked it over, and I've looked it over, and I'd like to motion adoption of resolution 18-45. And I should complete the engineering report.
1845.
Well, I have, I have another comment under my discussion on streets and sidewalks.
1845 is under.
Approving and adopting the IDOT annual city street finance report, correct? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Dottie. Discussion, roll call, vote.
Miller?
Aye.
Moore? Maher?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Carried?
Okay, thank you for taking care of that.
And I want, okay, I have one more point. In, in reply to Paul's comment a month or two ago about the, the failure to take care of the commercial area of the city. I have talked with Kent Ralston. Previously, Kent and Paul and I and Mid-America and Kent Ralston and
Stillner.
Greg had all met and I told Kent that this is an issue bigger than the five of us and that Paul is interested in having a public meeting so that we get input from the community. So I'm asking that the council consider a public meeting so that we discuss the issue before it happens with the Melrose scape.
I second.
Okay, and this, you're calling a special meeting?
A special meeting, yes. I'd like to get, really get the public here and they're failing to come to council meetings and and I understand because they last so long. But this is specific to that issue. And I'm concerned and I think any citizen in the city would be concerned because this is going to be a major, major development area.
So there's a motion and a second to have a special public meeting of, to resolve some of this Melrose.
2022? It's the 2022 improvements, right?
Yeah.
Well, you put it in your report too, the Mid-American, maybe Mid-American needs to be there too.
They do. They were there before, weren't they?
Yeah, it's related to.
Did you mention that?
I think it's time to do something about that. We need disclosure on that. Or public, public feedback, not disclosure.
Paul, what did you think would be most helpful? A public meeting like we had for the two years ago for the, you know, football season where we had everybody or, you know, just this.
I wasn't aware of it, but I guess the adjacent property owners need to be involved because whether you know it or not, you can enter fire by the property to do what you want to do.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody's ever violated the cost to put the utilities underground. I don't know what you're going to do for future handicap parking.
Yeah.
Because you're screwing me out of the one spot I have in the front. That's where the handicap bus unload people out there right in front of the dentist's office. It's the busiest street. You could have or ask to try and unload handicaps.
Well, all the way, all the.
All of this stuff has to do with the widening and beautification. And just like the Triangle Park, electrical box for the stop sign, the intersection, it's going to have to move to widen the sidewalk. There's just an awful lot of detail and things that have to be thought out. And I know you've got a basic design, but we've got to arbitrate on some of this stuff to see how it's going to work and whether you can even fund it from what you have building up and what you're going to need to come out of your budget to get it done.
Well, as I recall, Josiah, that also involved taking, the taking of property all the way up to Melrose, did it not? Up to Sunset widening, if we're going to widen Melrose on the south.
You're right that it showed acquisition of right-of-way in the south side of Melrose from the railroad, from the railroad bridge. from the railroad, from the railroad bridge.
Yeah.
Through the Cozer-Golfview intersection. But then, um, the road actually widens out as you head up towards Sunset. So, it stops just there on the curve to get done what your concept shows.
So, those people, those landowners should be involved too.
Right.
They will have to be.
I think we need to follow the same rules of engagement that we followed whenever we've had, um, the, what is it? The sidewalk widening project, the tree planting project. I think those are, have been carefully, we've been very careful that they, that budding property owners get notice and they're not left behind. And I think, let's have another conversation. It's been some time around this very detailed intensive project and I think we need to revisit it.
Who's designing that project? Is it you or is it the MPO? Josiah?
We would put the plans together.
Yeah, it's up to Josiah to do.
Okay.
The MPO is the, you know, they help distribute the funding to the cities to.
Yeah, it's DOT money.
Do you have enough detail to, at this point, to have a public meeting?
I don't think so.
I'm just. You know, it all depends on what the scope and agenda is of the meeting. You know, if it's to hash out all the design details, then no, because the project hasn't been designed. But if it's to let people know that it's coming, what it is, what the concept is, what's involved, then yes.
And the costs don't come until after the design generally or where?
There was, there is a cost put together. When the concept was put together because that was what was submitted to the MPO for the funding process.
I mean, like the burying the power lines costs.
Yeah, so there was costs estimated for all the construction plus utilities and acquisition of right-of-way. So, estimates of all those items.
And the money's coming from the DOT primarily, isn't it?
They awarded a portion.
Yeah.
Not 100%.
Right. Because it's arterial highway, I think. That's the reason, yeah.
I, I'm not sure you're ready. I mean, no, you know.
I don't.
Gathering all the people together.
Yeah, maybe not in like two weeks.
Couple weeks.
No.
It's too soon, but.
But I think we need to work towards that, just like you're doing with all of court. You're working towards.
How about having something of a conversation sometime in spring? Because you're also getting into October, we're getting into November, we're getting into December. Let's just have a conversation around maybe February or March. Actually, those are terrible snow days.
When, when do we, when do we get the, when does the grant become active? It's two, about two years, isn't it?
Well, it's, I believe it's, uh, 2022. 22.
But we can begin.
But we could do planning in 21.
Yeah, yeah, because we get the money, but we can't do it till a certain date, but the planning certainly has to be done.
Let's do this. Why don't I get together some thoughts on this for next month and then decide if it's.
Okay.
We'll try and shoot for an open house, maybe something in this fall or.
Town hall meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to be a, everybody come sit down and it could be, you know, be here from this time to this time and come look at it.
Just to put them on notice so that, you know, they're not kneecapped.
So, are you willing to withdraw your motion and is that okay with the council?
You mean this, this motion?
Because we had a motion for, um, to have a public meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'll withdraw that.
And that's okay?
And next week, um.
The council.
Yeah, well, I mean, excuse me, next month Josiah will give us more information.
Okay, I think that's a good solution. Thanks.
Before we move on, um, Josiah, could I ask, when you're done writing?
Yeah, go ahead.
What are your thoughts on Paul's comment regarding sealing?
Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of sealing.
Do we not do enough of that?
We haven't done a whole lot in the past. We did a section of street last year on Cozer. That's one of the things we're doing on the West Marietta. And then for next year, we have it on Highland in Cozer on the west side.
Are we?
Concrete sections.
Are we not doing that as rapidly as you would advise?
Uh, you know, it's always, we try and mix. We do a little bit of this and take care of some of those and do some sidewalk and just, just because of the, like, Dottie mentioned, the budget issues, you try and get a little bit of everything, take care of the potholes that pop up, so.
Okay. And is that, do we run out of a season to seal pretty soon?
It's a construction season work, yeah. Spring to fall.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a preventative thing that, you know, helps, you know, getting water and having expand and causing damage.
All, all your pavement's going to crack. Your concrete pavement will crack, your asphalt will crack eventually. So, yes, I'm in favor of that.
So, I mean, Paul, does that?
I met with Josiah the day after we had a real big, heavy rain. And none of you people are affected by it. And all the storm sewers were filled up with shredded branches, leaves and sticks. And the water was up across the eight-foot, 11-foot wide sidewalk from my building to the Venice sign and to Stella's. Water ran over the driveway entrance to my north parking lot. Water ran over the north side of the bridge. It went over the curb and if you walk down that sidewalk, look over the abutment, you can see how that hillside corroded. Number one, the transcontinental manhole for communication got bell written on the lid. It was taken in water, which has to take the funk down. The sanitary sewer in the street takes in water, so you're flooding the sewer system, it's seeping. When I was younger, we cleaned our basement out a number of times until we put in backflow preventer in our sewer. Now, we don't have that problem. But what I'm saying is the water pressure on the cracks in those streets, that water's going to seep down. The big trucks dipping the different sections of the concrete. It seems to me a minimal expense to seal that, to control the water. And I know this with the freak rain, but at the same time, Josiah agrees that in the hollied court, we've got to have bigger intakes to control the water and not little brinky-dink ones that plug up on the flush sides in the street. And so, just so you know, it's happened before and it just happened two weeks ago. And around the flower bed, that paving is all cracked and starting to settle. Thank God it isn't a crosswalk like I keep valiating about. But it should still be patched. It was going to wait till 2020 to get fixed. Because it's going to get very. And that, that's my point. You've got to be a little bit preventative.
Okay, so be sure to put that on the list. You always have a nice list for us, for the council, on some of the streets projects that they need to look at when they budget. And I know you'll add that to the list this time. It was a catastrophic rain, about four inches and a half an hour or something like that. Anyway, yeah. You wanted to give your report too, Josiah. You, you went through some of it, or we did. But you sent around a report.
Sure, the Iowa City Fiber Optic Project was supposed to be done. It's not. They were delayed by weather and I think they've ran into utility conflicts, problems getting under the railroad, things like that.
Can I ask a question? I think it was their trucks that tore up the right-of-way on Melrose. Because it was torn up before the football game, so I don't think it was football people. I think it was them. Are they going to restore that turf when they're done?
That's part of their contract is to restore things that they've, but if you, send me a note too, if you see that.
And I, yeah, I sent you a note too.
Yeah, I'll take a look at yours.
Thank you.
Question. Is the telecom, is it, has it been completed underneath the road yet or is it not done yet?
I don't know. Last I know, they were struggling to get the bore under, yeah. Um, I had, had the Russ Boyer report in there, listed all the things that Russ has been up to the last two to three weeks. Um, I did touch on the rain event from that August 28th, the one Paul was talking about in particular. My time spent on Golfview Avenue, the intakes there, um, and a number of other locations where people had called and we went out and looked at, again, issues with intakes being blocked with debris or needing to be cleaned out.
Do you have an update on when the 136 Golfview will be fixed?
I, I don't yet.
Okay, that's where the bus stop is in the morning. So, you got a lot of kids poking at it every day.
Okay, that, that's the intake. If you've been down there, that's surrounded by orange fence. So, as noted in the report, we're working with a contractor to come and excavate the opening underneath there, see if something needs to be fixed and then backfill it. The next item was about Mid-American Energy and just to follow up to that meeting that Dottie mentioned that we had with them and you, Paul. And I was able to meet with them again this afternoon to follow up on some of their sketches and preliminary layouts of like how, what kind of equipment they would need to take the poles out. Um, and they're going, the, I think the summary of our meeting today is that I got a better understanding of how they laid that out. It wasn't in stone, but I communicated to them some questions we, I had at least. You know, like, does this stuff need to be right on the street? How far back can you put it? Can you move it this way or that way? And so, they're going to relook at those things and, and send me a new concept of that. And then, uh, the report also touched on a number of miscellaneous items, uh, the storm sewer inspections that are going on. Oops. The, uh, financial report that we've filled out, sidewalk inspections for the southeast quadrant have just, just gotten started. Payment markings are supposed to be done, uh, according to the contractor in the next two weeks. A lot of that work is typically done at night. And then, um, all of court improvements, we'll have our first review set to submit at the end of September for that project.
Any questions for Josiah? Okay. Thank you, Josiah. Could you hold on while Greg gives his report? Now, we'll go to the hotel report update. And I know Jim apparently has a birthday today and didn't want to spend it here for some reason. And so, thank you for coming, Greg.
No problem. Thanks for having me. Haven't seen you guys in a while, so. Hotel, we are still, I think we are about 75 to 95% on our structural blueprints. Still waiting on those from Rohrbach Associates. Um, we're waiting, he said he was going to have those done by October 1st. Um, we're waiting on our architectural blueprints. He says he's going to have those done by November 1st. Um, I'm holding, holding him to the wire on those dates. Those are really holding our project up at this point. We are continuing to do sanitary sewer and storm sewer, um, on the site. So, we are, we are working, the rain held us up, you know, quite a bit, um, from being able to do anything there. We, um, we've been working with our neighbors to, um, on the easements, um, in Iowa City. Our Iowa City neighbors to tie into the sanitary and storm sewer. And actually, the electrical, uh, they're giving us an electrical easement as well to tie in some electrical, into the electrical grid on, on that particular property. So, we're working really good with our neighbors. One of the things, um, I wanted to let you guys know that we, one of the agreements with the, our neighbors, um, was they wanted, in, in return for them giving us easement rights, is they're having us replace a lot of concrete panels on their, on their portion of their land. And today, that's what Jim and I were doing most of the day today on his birthday, was, uh, jackhammering out concrete panels, so it's. And where I'm going with that is, is if there is any way, I know Jim and I are allocated, you know, funds to, to the, to the University Heights, and if there was any way, uh, we could work some of those funds, like if you guys had a budget of, say, you know, X amount of dollars to do, you know, certain things, Jim and I can handle it, like, you know, like on the Triangle Park. We're actually contractors. I'm a general contractor. We have, I have a general contracting firm out of my office. We build 12plexes, we build duplexes, um, so just an opportunity to, um, work some of that money off. And moving farther down the line, we have, you know, a $20,000 budget this year, 10,000 each year, but we'd be willing to go over that, you know, and, and dip into next year's allocated funds if you guys would allow us to do the work, essentially. Of course, um, the, the price, the bids, um, would obviously be fair, whatever Josiah or whoever in the council would, would, um, be, uh, you know, allow us to charge for the work. So, it would just come off of what we owe you, essentially. Back to the hotel, sorry about that. But as far as the hotel goes, um, we are going as fast as we can with what we have, um, to work with. We need a general contractor, um, to jump on board. We're going to make that decision hopefully this week yet on who we're going to have build the hotel for us. And then, we're going to be, they're going to be working directly with the architects. And, um, as far as, uh, I think I met with Mid-American Energy today and they plan on getting, um, some of their work done this month yet. And that's kind of why I was asking Josiah about the underground HDPE because they actually asked me today if that had been done yet because they were hoping that maybe if it was possible to work with that contractor to maybe pull in another conduit for them for future. Uh, if they're going underneath the railroad, um, they're maybe wanting to pull in a conduit since they're doing it, they want to pull in a conduit underneath the railroad for, um, future electrical, I guess, division project to get rid of some of that, uh, overhead electrical they were wanting to, they just asked, so I didn't know, so. I did text the owner of the company since they're parking all their equipment on their, on their hotel site for that project. Um, we kind of got to know him pretty good. I text, I text one of the owners and asked him if he knew, actually, and he was going to text somebody here, but he never got back to me before I got up here. But, um, that would be awesome if we could pull that conduit in at the same time. But, um, that's something we can talk about another time. As far as the hotel goes, um, I was hoping to have Josiah, um, my, we have the preliminary retaining wall prints done. We don't have the final retaining wall prints done, so once I get those, Josiah, I'll get those to you for review. And then, we kind of held off on the detention basin for now. We're going to put that underneath the general contractor's scope of work, I think, uh, as they do the footings. So, I think Jim and I personally are just going to do the, uh, retaining wall portion of the civil, civil work. And I'll get that, like I said, I get that, I'll get those, uh, prints, those, um, blueprints to you soon for review. So, retaining walls is our next big step. And then, backfilling, um, backfilling retaining walls after that. So, um, so that's, um, along with the ongoing civil, uh, the ongoing sanitary sewer and storm sewer.
Any questions for Greg? Thank you. Keep it going.
Yeah, you bet. We're definitely pushing, so.
Make those deadlines. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a proposal with the council consensus that it's already almost 9:00 PM and we still have yet to go through the administration portion of the meeting. And I'd like to propose. I'd like to propose, since we have the NAACP, our president from, from the Des Moines area here tonight, I'd like to, and she still has to drive home, I think out of a courtesy, if we can please move ordinance 235 up for consideration now, and also the VRBO, who is also a interested party, and also from the Des Moines area, so if we can address them in that order, that would be appreciated as a general courtesy to these members who have driven many miles away from University Heights.
I'd second, I kinda have the same thought.
Yep, I see a consensus by council, okay. We'll go to first consideration of ordinance number 235 prohibiting discriminatory policing policies. And Sylvia, that's your agenda item, so.
Yeah, thank you very much for moving this item, actually both items up for these Des Moines guests tonight. I just wanted to start off by addressing that the impetus for ordinance 235 was the seating of a new chief. That happened in late June, and in July, ordinance 235 showed up. It didn't have the number 235, but it certainly had a header that gave all of council direction on the, on the importance of the document. It's an ordinance. And at that time, I have said, and I continue to say, that I support our police department, but I also support that, that as some of the comments have made in the, in the public today, that we have, that we support them with professionalism standards. And I think none of us doubt that we want, or none of us want to work against having a well-staffed, well-paid, and well-professional group of police officers. And so certainly, I'm coming in with a position that this is an ordinance that gives our community great assurances, gives our police department the guidance from council that does not disrupt regardless of who comes and goes from, from the staff or the, or the seat of chief police officer, which is one of the reasons that, you know, in thirty-six months, we've changed from one police officer, chief, to another, to another. And what the public, and maybe some of us don't know, is that the manuals keep changing. This is where we keep our expectations for the department, and those keep changing. And all I'm saying with this ordinance is, let's adopt at least one policy from that manual and make it permanent, so that regardless of who is the chief of University Heights Police Office, we move forward. And I'm glad to hear tonight that Chief Nate, you've had, looks to me like you've been working and reviewing with Nate, and with Lisa, and with the legal department, Steve Ballard, with the NAACP, on how to implement or address some of the provisions of this ordinance, which is a work product of an ACLU coalition group. So I just wanna clarify that. So I'd like to start by opening up and maybe addressing what I perceive to have been the issues that were raised in Nick's report that was sent out, I guess, in July, no, in August, he gave me those issues. And I think the issues were, and we can start with those. Nate, do you have any other, Nate, do you have any other preference of how you wanna address this? In the, okay, so I think what I perceive to be issues squarely within the ordinance, meaning they didn't talk about what streets and sidewalks could do, or what, or what any other member of council can do from their chairman perspective, is just squarely, what does this ordinance do? And here's what I heard, can we call this a resolution versus an ordinance? And I think that we want to keep this to be an ordinance, just because of the permanent nature of an ordinance. Unlike a policy which, or a resolution, which we can forget about, or it can get replaced, an ordinance has a special place in our local laws and local rules, and everybody seems to know where they are, because we also happen to post them on our website. So it's an ordinance as opposed to a resolution or any other less protected form of document from our, from our city council perspective.
Steve, would you mind speaking on that? You've given some good feedback to the committee that met.
Yeah, so with respect to the nature of a, of an ordinance, I guess, one of the things that I think the council needs to consider is, you know, an ordinance typically isn't simply, and I don't mean to suggest that this ordinance is, but an ordinance typically isn't just simply a statement of policy. There's usually a standard, or, you know, of the expectation of conduct that's, that's gonna be met, and then there's a penalty section if it's not met. And I guess that's one of the things I would encourage the council to think about, as you think about, do you want an ordinance? Do you want a resolution? Do you want a motion? Those are the general ways that the council may act. Of course, the city also acts through the police department's own policies. But I would, I would ask that the council consider the, you know, what I've called the penalty for violating the ordinance, if it wants to go the ordinance route.
Okay, my understanding from the ACLU attorneys is that this is an appropriate tool for an ordinance structure. There, when I, when I asked, you know, resolutions versus ordinance, 362.216 came up versus definitely subsection 21. So Steve, I'm going to request that, that you probably connect with, maybe at this point, we can also have the NAACP's legal team weigh in, because I understand other cities are using the ordinance route, and they're using model language that's extremely similar to this one tonight.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, if somebody can give me the contact info. That would be helpful.
We don't have a penalty section in this ordinance, correct?
No, 'cause it's really not meant to penalize. It's meant to collect data, report the data, have, would have the CRB, which is Citizens' Review Board.
See, that would, that troubles me without clear parameters.
Let me just speak, so, you can't have, you can't weigh down an ordinance with all these details.
I know, but I know City, Iowa City has had issues with the, with the review board.
So with that in mind, I think that is not a difficult piece of, of item to be reviewed at all. So I'd like to request, you know, you mentioned.
We have our legal redress team, so we'll be able to give them contact information. And then also just addressing the penalty piece, that with the Citizens' Review Board, they will make recommendations. So you actually do have a line item directly to.
Enforceability, right.
Or remedy.
Right, so are you just looking at civil penalties, Steve? Are you looking at dollar?
Well, no, so, what, well, what I was.
What exactly are you looking for?
So two things, I think I would say. One is that, that just, if you look at the University Heights ordinances, the typical approach of the ordinances says, this is our law, this is our expectation, and if you violate it, here's what happens to you. That's typical of city ordinances, I think statewide. That was one of my, my comments. With regard to the review board, and I may be reading this differently than, than other people, but I don't see a provision that talks about making a recommendation. What it says is, if the stop or arrest was in violation of the ordinance, the board shall impose disciplinary measures.
Right, and that includes the chief?
That was my question.
That has the police chief involved.
Right, so it's, so I think that it's, it's not as though, I mean, the way I read this, the board itself is gonna impose discipline, and, and I guess as long as I'm on that subject, that's, that's an area where my comments are that, that the ordinance needs to, the provision needs to be consistent with existing departmental policies, but it also needs to be consistent with, with the peace officer bill of rights, Iowa Code ADF, that, that gives the peace officer certain rights, and we wouldn't want the, you know, the, the review board to upset those.
Right, and that would be part of your administrative procedures on how to implement, on how to implement those details.
So Steve, would that then change how council has addressed employee issues in the past? Because council is, if the review board is then making that final determination in prior employee issues, council has always taken those up and made that decision either at, with, you know, with your advice, or with, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I guess my answer is that that's not really, I don't, I don't know that that's settled under the ordinance. I mean, it says impose disciplinary measures. I guess one reading of that is that the board's gonna do it, and that's gonna be it, but, but part of that may run afoul of Iowa law.
Right.
In my mind.
I'd like to take up the offer on the legal redress team to, to help us with that evaluation, because the ACLU has, has provided informed information that would not, I don't think would be in contradiction to the, to what you're, what you're discussing, Steve, and so far as it wouldn't present a disciplinary inconsistency in what the city can adopt, but that's where you would have to bring in alignment between the authority of the CRB and the policies.
Yeah, that's, that's great, I'm happy to talk with them.
Mm-hmm. That won't be an issue, okay. And then the next one, but conceptually, is there a commitment from this council? I'd like to see us all give civil rights the status and the importance that we have given other comparable, you know, private rights. You know, we have a rental permit program where people have a cause of action, they're able to, you know, it's a defendable right. We have hunting provisions in our city. We've got the right to keep chickens in our city, and the right to bring porta-potties into our city. And all these are ordinances, and if, if this is the only hitch in there, because it's a matter of how we've dealt with it historically, if there's a little bit of a departure from that that's permissible under Iowa law, I would hope that you would all support it. If it's just a stylistic thing that we've done, I think it's, you know, this presents the opportunity to adopt an approach that is still lawful and still eligible for ordinance. I'd like for us to keep an open mind on that. Did you have any concerns, Nate, on that?
On which part of it? I mean, there's, I.
Actually, no, I'm sorry, not Nate, Nick.
Okay. I was gonna say.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, as of right now, I'm, you know, I'm, Steve's comments are my thoughts at this time, you know, and I look forward to additional feedback on that.
Perfect. All right, then, I liked your feedback, which is issue number two, which is the ordinance doesn't reflect the good work that our, our police force has or had in place at any point in time. So I went back and I added two recitals with respect to illustrating, one, that we do have, do have policies, it just happened not to be in an ordinance format, and that having an ordinance provides these policies and any, you know, supplements or any enhancements that you make, the strength of, and the force of the law, local law, not state law, but just our local law. So I wanted to reiterate that I appreciated the feedback from both of you and the committee. And I, did you have any other suggestions or recommendations?
Well, I.
Assuming that the ordinance issue, you know, setting that aside is not an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I might give you, like I said, I think, maybe in an email and also in my report, I believe, I plan to do a redline with those sorts of comments. I would like to give you a sense of how I would word it and see what your thoughts are on that.
And are, is the redline, you're thinking, just limited to this?
Well, just all the issues. I mean, I, the issues I brought up in the August report, I assume is kind of the outline that you're going down right now, so that would be.
That's the only one I could identify in terms of issues. But go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, so, if I just open up my August report, we have the ordinance versus resolution, we had the sections that repeat current law slash policy. Again, you know, the issue there is if you're saying, you're making statements as, as if they're not the case right now, I think that can be misleading.
And so I've just gone back.
Right, and so that's what we were just talking about.
So if you don't like those two recitals, feel free to redline them off and.
Yeah, and then number three was something that was reiterated today in the letter from Mr. Baxter. One of the concerns, I think, is that there are out-of-town people who maybe don't appreciate that we do enforce our speeding laws. There may be some locals that, that know we enforce our speeding laws. And so the perception, I guess, that was communicated to me, especially over the last two months, is that maybe people who are from out-of-town need to have better notice that we enforce our speeding laws. And so that's why I had brought up with Nate's help in the actually identifying the actual LED radar speed sign examples that could be used. I was looking for funding to, or at least wanting to hear from the rest of council about putting up a radar sign coming into town from the west.
Well, Nick, I've got, I have a comment about that.
Yeah.
From streets and sidewalks. We already have purchased the mobile unit.
Right.
Which does not need wiring, and so we can put it there for, you know, the massive traffic or move it around. And your sign would cost in the neighborhood of $10,000, Josiah said, whereas if we put a large, large entering University Heights speed limit 25 miles an hour by itself up there, big, you know, not a little tiny one like they scrunch them all down on the totem pole, that would cost maybe $200 or $300. And so I, I mean, I'm all for, you know, marking it better so that you don't get the "I didn't know," you know, reply, but I think we need to go small. If we're going small everywhere, let's go small here, and either use what we have or try just a metal sign at first.
Well, I mean, the costs of the signs that Nate identified were around $2,000.
With the wiring and everything?
There's no wiring necessary, they're, they're solar.
Okay.
You know, I've heard from quite a few people that the sign, I think Baxter also referenced it, there's another sign like this in Iowa City that seems to be pretty effective. Steve, I think you might drive by that every day when you come into town.
Yeah.
And, and so I think, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not deciding this by myself, I'm throwing that out there as something that I think would address the issue and is related to what we're talking about, because a lot of our traffic stops are presumably for speeding through the town. And so, you know, being able to, you know, if the, if the complaint is that we're not fairly putting people on notice, and that's why we have disproportionately more out-of-town stops, then that's why it seemed to be connected. And I think Mr. Baxter's been pretty persuasive too, and, well, it's, I mean, he was citing some statistics that Nate had already, that Chief Peterson already had, I think you brought up at the last meeting, maybe, did you?
Yeah, it was the last meeting, it was July or.
July, yeah.
July, maybe, yeah.
But I don't know if that bears, you know, repetition, but we've, you know, this, if people are, are struck by a vehicle that's going 25, it's very different in terms of their outcome as, as compared to 30 and 35, and so really slowing people down.
Yeah, I, I just think all you have to do is go out there and look at it yourself. You don't need Baxter replying, you know, that it's inadequate, you can't see it, and it's, because we don't have an entry to University Heights here, because we don't have a center section that we own, you know, there isn't a place for a pretty sign, so.
So it sounds to me like I'm hearing different pieces of research information on signage, which, you know, the ordinance, once again, doesn't tell a city what type of signage to have. It's just been something that's been identified as, as an additional measure to possibly reduce contacts, right? So I totally agree that I, I myself like a reminder, a visual reminder, flashing reminder works well. I know you parked the one for the portable speeding unit right on my Ridgeview home, and I see a lot of people being very observant and very careful. So I, I don't know if there's council direction to help Nick, Dottie, and Nate to come up with a solution.
Well, I'd like some bids on, on the flashing sign, specific, two or three, so that we can, and I will talk further with Josiah, but I just don't want spending, I recognize the issue, but I don't want spending as a, you know, the same story you told me with the park, I don't want spending it if we don't need to.
Yeah, and then next, so you might, I might not be scoring points with you to talk about more spending, but the next issue with data collection is, you know, of course, we have already been doing data collection. The problem is that with our current technology, it involves a lot of, either Chief Peterson or somebody else's man-hours to basically put it into the proper format to make any sense. So what we had done prior to the August meeting, what Nate had done, don't take credit for it, was find out, was work with Iowa City and basically get it set up. and basically get it set up. So we, we would be paying $1,800 to get their software that can provide, we're basically getting Iowa City's technology at a fraction of the price because they already have it going. And we just would have to pay to basically migrate it to our system, is my understanding.
Right. We're, we're simply paying for the software company. They have to physically come touch every one of our computers that has that. They can't do it remotely. So for their tech to drive here and spend the, what they presume is gonna be a six to eight hour job, by the time it downloads, they test it, make sure it works, and it's doing things like it's supposed to be, that's their fee for their time, their travel. So that's the software, yeah, the software itself is a, is minimal, but it's, it's a lot of their-
Is it in their budget?
Staff time.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I, I'm super happy that this was identified, but I also, for the public's knowledge, the ordinance doesn't dictate what technology is used. It's left to the communities, especially the community's budget, to figure out what they, I personally know of some communities that are not quite as large as Iowa City, but a lot larger than we are, who are using Excel. But that's because the chief has been using Excel and that's what he feels comfortable with and he's trained a sergeant to do. I do want to reiterate from a budget finance perspective, we may be able to find this cash from other areas. So I am not, I'm very, I'm hopeful and I'm cautiously optimistic that we will be able to resolve this hopefully by the end of October when we come back for, for a formal reading on this ordinance to get this moving.
If you want me to go down my list?
Yeah.
You know, another thing was, in talking about the citizen review board, you know, I just think that needs more time and attention. Steve was very useful in talking about the Iowa City, because originally-
Steve, who, I'm sorry?
Sorry. Originally Nate and I were talking about the Iowa City Board. Steve offered some pretty good insights as to how that worked and the involvement of independent legal counsel for, so not the, not an Iowa City city attorney, but a separate attorney actually works with them. And it just became apparent that, we can talk about this now, I guess, or it'd be something that we would just develop to actually just fill in the details, some of, some of which were already brought up in terms of the, you know, the discipline issue. But also just, again, you know, I don't like unfunded mandates when we're saying you gotta do all these things, but we're not giving any money for it. So if we are serious about this, I think we need to either fund it or decide, you know, what we're gonna, you know, fund or I guess not fund. And, and the same thing kind of goes to the, the data collection, you know. I don't agree with the idea that we would collect data and either waste money on, on officers needing to organize it or have a bunch of data that's being collected that we don't, we don't know what it means and it's not being interpreted. I've, I have reached out to, that Chris Barnum that has been referenced, was referenced in one of the articles. And we planned it to talk about what the data actually would mean. Because as a city, I think if we are gonna be collecting the data, we should know if, if the data is showing something that we need to correct or if it's, or if it shows we're doing a good job. And so, again, before I would wanna get the data collection going, or at the same time that we get the data collection going, I think we should have an understanding of what the data actually means.
And I just want to emphasize that I'm, I'm really liking this conversation, Nick, because I think part of the focus of this ordinance is that it makes this structure permanent. Right now, what I'm hearing is that we may, you know, we may have a policy that says we collect data, but we haven't, or we don't know what we've been doing with what we have. Or if we have, we have one possibility of, you know, interpreting only one way and maybe we're not interpreting it another way. So it's unclear to me whether we're even benchmarking to best practices or we're just, you know, leaving it very, very local to our prior, prior practice, prior practice, prior practice. I would feel much more confident that we are benchmarking and trending with cities like Iowa City, Dubuque, and, and Des Moines and any other cities that are collecting this data and interpreting it that better helps us provide some assurance to our public that our contacts are free from bias and we have the numbers to stand by it as a number of different commentators have made this night. And Chief, do you think that would be a good vision to have?
Yeah. And speaking with this proposal in general and speaking with the officers, none of the officers have any issue with collecting the data, publishing the data. I mean, there's, the data that I shared, I think, at the July or the August meeting when this came up was representative of the fact that there, that there isn't. I mean, the concerns might be there. I think the concerns are hidden in what Nick had said, that those folks, just people don't like that we enforce our speeding or our traffic laws in general. And that's, I think there's other claims that are made as a result of that.
Well, and that's really the big point there is, I don't know that we can just compare our data to other cities that are not similar to ours. I, I'm not saying we can, I'm not saying we can't. I don't know the answer. That's why I'm hoping that Mr. Barnum will give me some, you know, will have, have some background to maybe, you know, tell me his thought at least and, you know.
Have you made a call with him yet, the meeting?
We've emailed back and forth. I think we're gonna probably, we've had trouble-
Do you have a conference call with him? Would you mind including me on that?
Yeah.
I think that'd be fabulous.
I think it'll probably be Thursday, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So-
The training, the next, training was the next thing on the list. I just didn't think that, I think the ordinance need to be more specific on what it was requiring. I saw your feedback that was saying, well, we're not really requiring anything specific. But we have already, we already have implicit bias training that we have in place. And I guess the concern would be, again, an unfunded mandate that are we gonna say, yeah, you've gotta get more, and then if that's out of town and we're taking hours off, it's, I'm not saying it's a right or wrong thing. It's just a judgment that the council has to make. Is it something that we're gonna, you know, send people out of state for? You know, is what we're getting right now sufficient? Again, the ordinance kind of, you know, it's one of those things, it wasn't recognizing what we currently did. So we were just confused about that.
I've gotta tell you that I, the, the out of state expected costs that were top, that were mentioned was kind of extensive. I was a little bit, you know, surprised to see that because the ordinance only calls for two things, implicit bias training and training on how to collect the data, which, which makes sense because we have had high turnover. We just had, right before you were seated as a chief of police, we had, we lost an officer to a local municipality who had been with us for some time. And you were down to just three people working, including yourself. So it just showcases that we have, we're, we're always challenged by other communities that look to our, to our police department to pick up their next recruit. And they outcompete us on money. They outcompete us on scope of work that they perform. It's probably more interesting, high-speed chases and whatnot. And we just can't compete in those areas. But this ordinance is a stabilizing ordinance. All it says is annually you train on, on implicit bias. And you train on how to, on what this ordinance provides, which is a collection of data and the responsibility that chief has. So your troops are at all times knowing that they are submitting information that helps you report up to any future council, including, I don't think maybe the current one. But yeah, the current one would be captured with a report. So as far as I'm concerned, the training is not set. So I have no concerns about having an unfunded mandate because internally we have had assistance from the city attorney, who is not an expert on Iowa State University's materials on zoning or, or any of the other property land use rights that Iowa State prepared. However, he took up the opportunity to review the information and pass it along to the zoning board and to the board of adjustment. Another example of where the city attorney has a resource for training was satisfied was the Iowa Public Information Bureau, IPID, which required that the city get trained on how to handle, how to manage, and process public records requests. Because we got dinged not two years ago on not having a program. So he did a, a good job with presenting information that wasn't necessarily in his bailiwick of expertise. And he did a good job. And I think that we need to make use of our resources. The other thing is, I really like the fact that you attended the local implicit bias training, which is hosted by Iowa City. So I think this Lynn County, Johnson County area has many opportunities for training that we just need to pair up. And it also gives you an opportunity to reach out to chief colleagues in those areas to see what's going on. And as I mentioned in my notes, just from a budget fiscal prudence, it seems to me like out of state or remote training sites would be your last recourse.
They would. And I guess, three things. One, with the software that Nick had discussed, the training, there isn't, there's very minimal training required because with the Excel sheet, if, you know, there's another chief after me, I would have to sit down. If Nick is the next chief, I had to sit down with him and explain to him, this is how the Excel sheet is set up. This is how it works. With the software, that isn't an issue because the software is designed by the gentleman that designed it for Iowa City. And that's, it is what it is. So it's pre-programmed into the software. That's not an issue. The second point that I would like to make, since you brought it up, is the number of officers that have left to go to their agencies, I would say, is representative of the fact that University Heights hasn't had this issue in the past and doesn't have this issue because these other municipalities would not look to University Heights to pull officers from here, which there are approximately, that I know of, 10 to 12 officers currently working in Johnson County, other agencies, that started at University Heights. They wouldn't be pulling from here if we had officers out doing things that were illegal and not best practice. So-
You're right on that statement, but it also doesn't capture some of the employees that have separated from service. That I'm aware that even outside agencies were where, that's what we're, what we're calling the bad apple actors. And I think those are, I can't discuss it. It's in confidential employment records and actually not even part of this council. It was another council. And so I can't get into those details, but rest assured that I'm, I'm only, I'm only stating that in all departments or many departments, it seems to me bad, bad apples are there. All this data would be, would be an extra layer of monitoring and supervision. And I'm really happy that by getting you technology, you would be able to do that because formulas would then be scaled and set to US Census track record information for the county. You would have very little, very little resourcing to have to do. So $1,800 is, is really not, it's a no-brainer, as Dottie would say, to bring quality assurance to every ticket that this department issues.
Right. I guess the third point then was the fact that we already have the agreement with the University of Iowa and their officer who offers the implicit bias training. And I have the commitment from them to include us in their implicit bias training. Here locally, the concern was, I think when this was discussed initially, it wasn't just the implicit bias training. It was just left at, training was required, but the training wasn't clearly defined as to what it had to be. So if it's just the implicit bias training, we have that agreement in place. We can make that yearly training happen as the university and Iowa City, as often as their officers receive that training.
Great clarification question because for the public's knowledge, this ordinance isn't demanding, it gives the, the chief an ability to select where he wants to get his training. Of course, the budget will always come in to help you, help, you know, inform your decision. And number two, it's a super flexible ordinance. If things change in two years or three years, that involves training, this ordinance hasn't tied you down to the same old module. If there's better modules out there that you believe you want to get and you, and it satisfies the implicit bias training or the, and, and the training on the ordinance, you get to have it. And this ordinance is, this gives you a great deal of flexibility. That's what I liked about this ordinance. It gives our city the ability to grow with technology. So if we want to step up the technology and graduate from the Iowa City software at some point, we can do so. It gives us a great deal of flexibility and training.
So training, it doesn't currently say that chief makes the decision. Is that what you're wanting? I would put that in my red line that-
It requires. It's a-
The chief? Well, that's okay. I mean-
Well, it doesn't require, I mean, all of this falls on the chief's, on the shoulders of the chief to implement. That's why-
I, I can, I know we've, we've spent a lot of time. I can put that in my red line in terms of the chief.
That's why his manual is so important after the adoption of this ordinance. Because this is just your, think about it as you're building a framework for a house. This is your foundation, your four by fours and your roof and your sheet rock and your plumbing and your wiring. Anything else that you do, what, what other stuff you're bringing, what countertops, what refrigerator, what cabinets you select, that's up to your discretion to your needs and the needs of the community. In particular, as we're gonna be bringing in a hotel with 140 rooms, that may change the types of courses you want to be bringing in to, to your staff. And this, this does not tie you down or corner you with, with any requirements other than you demonstrate that you provided training on this ordinance, which means collection data and what systems to go. So if you go on vacation, your next in command should be able to know how to run numbers and process them and to raise any red flags or speak to staff as, as needed. And then, of course, any training. So I thought it was a super simple, uncomplicated ordinance that, that we could adopt and have as a gold standard of standing by your tickets. Because if there's anything I hate is having folks come and complain and for one reason or another, not being able to stand by the tickets our cops issue. I think, once we start addressing issues, whether they be bigger signage or this type of adopting this ordinance, I just don't want any clouds around those tickets whatsoever. At least that's my vision.
Yeah. And I guess my, from what we heard earlier, my, my last comment on it is just that, or I guess last two, that I'll make, that I'll make quick. First of all, that we, prior to this ordinance being introduced, you know, the local president here, Kevin and I have had a good working relationship. We were making steps in the implicit bias training and doing those things prior to the ordinance. So I, you know, I just, I guess I wanna make it clear that we've made those steps as a department prior to the city, the city stepping in and addressing it with the ordinance or with this proposal. So I've been thankful for that and we will continue to have those meetings and make those steps forward.
And maybe that's a recital we wanna put into the ordinance. Actually, I'll, I'll make sure that we have a recital. Whereas the, the UHPD has been building relationships and with the NAACP, is it the state or the local chapter?
I mean, we, the local chapter is who we're directly working with, obviously, but as a whole.
That should be part of the recitals. I agree with you. I think that's a good point. And by no means in my not including them, did I mean to disregard that whatsoever. I just didn't want to introduce, I wanted to stay with whatever was introduced by, by the ACLU, NAACP coalition and work with that. Because I'm, I'm not an anti-bias expert, but they are. And that's, that's where I borrowed the language.
Good.
So, and that's, okay. Well, it sounds to me like we don't have any insurmountable defects in this ordinance here. The only thing we do have is connecting our legal counsel, our city attorney, with the NAACP's defense team to discuss the status of the ordinance and, and getting that. So thank you very much. Is there any other comments from, from the table?
So we're gonna-
Let's go on to the next thing tonight, which is second consideration of ordinance number 233 prohibiting short-term rental of property, Airbnb, VBR, et cetera. Excuse me.
So I think this is actually gonna have to go back to first consideration because Steve made some changes to the language and we don't wanna rush it. So the first thing that we need to talk about is Steve changed the guest status from 15 days to 90. And I would like that to go back to 30 days. So I will motion that we change section eight to revert back to 30 days, as we discussed last month in August.
And what's the drive for the change?
Steve, I don't, you weren't directed. You sort of gleaned that from the conversation we had last month.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I, my notes, I had several different notes about people saying, you know, where'd you come up with 15 days? Could we do 30? I was looking at it and thinking back on some of the comments about somebody talking about guests from here or there. I, and I think I, I hope I said this in my legal report, this was, this is an arbitrary number. The council, you know, can select whatever it wants. But I do think that the language changes tighten up what we're talking about here and specify when you need, you know, when you need a rental permit. And that specify that you can't get a rental permit for less than 30 days, which is, it pretty clearly says you can't have an Airbnb VBR, VRBO use. And then, and then whether the guest is, is 90 days or 30 days, I mean, that's whatever the council wants to do with that. That's not gonna impact that other issue. not going to impact that other issue.
Okay, so there's a motion by Virginia for thirty days. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lisa.
Now, I don't know if folks want to discuss the comments made by Brian Losi earlier tonight during public comment. Doesn't look like it.
Well, yeah. I guess, I'm curious, do we have a sense of how many other VRBOs are out there right now? I mean, are we collecting hotel tax from them? Are they paying hotel tax?
You've not paid hotel tax, correct?
No, it's, and I will admit, VRBOs, Airbnbs, they kind of fall into a weird, weird category. Are they hotel, are they rental? And I will say that's been baited on, I think, more than one community, is how they want to treat it. I am not collecting hotel motel tax, and not remitting. I treat it as a rental, which is what most people, my understanding, but...
Because if you treat it as a rental, then you, you wouldn't have, you don't have a rental permit, correct?
I do.
You do have a rental permit for that property?
He does have a regular rental permit. So the uses that were discussed previously tonight with the nurse and the visiting professor, those would all be permissible uses on an ongoing basis, even if we pass ordinance 233 tonight. You would just need to update the tenant information every time that changes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, and so you've been under the new, you've been under the new, kind of the new changes from this year.
Yeah, I think the rental permit has been going on for a little while anyway. So since when I was first notified of that permit requirement, I submitted the information as requested to get the permit as issued.
Okay, and each, do you see a problem updating it? I mean, if, if we go ahead with this, I would anticipate that you'd continue to use this as a rental?
Well, I can certainly want to continue using it as VRBO. If you went ahead with this, we can, we would still be able to find tenants, not as many. To your question earlier, we've had sixteen, in the two years that we've been doing this, we've had sixteen less than thirty days, usually one, or like, as short as over a weekend, to as long as a couple of weeks. There have been five that have been thirty days or more, a month, two months, three months, and then five months.
So they're your outliers? They're really your smaller portion on your book of business, then?
Well, yes and no. I think when you, when you look at what's been empty, and not being used, if you were to calculate that, really the total number of days where it's been rented by someone less than, in those sixteen, is far, far less than actually than the number of days that it's either sat empty or had the long-term rentals.
Steve, could...
To answer your question from earlier, though, how many of these are operating in University Heights? I mean, the answer is, we don't really know, because there's no permitting process, there's no permission given or anything like that. But I would guess that the answer is somewhere between two and five, you know, kind of if you search University Heights on VRBO, you get a varying answer. I know, I know some have operated that might not be advertising right now.
Our, our housing inspector during the course of the rental changes said about four, so...
Yeah, I search it from time to time, and I've seen as many as four.
On VRBO, we're all the way.
There's two on there right now.
So one of the comments that I wanted to make, and maybe Brian, you can weigh in on this, the restrictions being considered tonight allow VRBO for under, you know, maximum thirty days without the owner having to be on the premises. I understand, no, is it with, with or without?
That's for people staying with you without compensation, right?
That's for just having a guest in your home.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can you run a VRBO with no?
No, there's no, the ordinance before you tonight, I have it backwards, says no short-term rentals. A rental has to be thirty days or more.
Thirty days or more, okay. Because North Liberty, when this issue of VRBO came out, it came out when North Liberty adopted their VRBO ordinance, and Caroline Christiansen showed up to council, where Jim Lane, Mike Haverkamp, myself, and Dottie Maher sat. And she asked if we could adopt a North Liberty version, which is, you know, you can't have a VRBO vacation rental home unless you, you know, the owner is there. So I, that's another mechanism that's available. But I, I don't think it would work for you.
If I can just, the, the reason why this is important to take up now is because we have these new rental restrictions. And so we have people that are thinking about buying property, or who currently own property, that do not have a regular rental permit, that are looking at using a VRBO operation because it's unregulated. And so I, this is just, it's not something I want to be expanding throughout the neighborhood, and it totally runs afoul of our stated objectives this year of reducing the number of rentals in town.
Well, not only that, but also if we're going to restore the residential character of the city, you can't have a different hybrid operating like a VRBO, which...
So I've been asking for feedback from residents for a number of months now, saying, are there people who live in their home, it's an owner-occupied home, that want to be able to make some extra money to help afford their rising property taxes, or whatever, that want this to be allowed? And I have heard from no one yet. And so I'm very comfortable, I'm sorry, Brian, you know my position on this, though. I, I don't think we should be allowing short-term rentals for houses that are otherwise vacant and unoccupied, outside of maybe football weekends. I don't think it's what we want for the character of our neighborhood. So...
And that's, that's the, that's the one, that's the one principle that I'm evaluating tonight, is by adopting this, are we moving further away, or are we getting closer to the residential character? That pretty much the entire city voted us slate in. So that's, that's what I'm trying to keep bear in mind, is how close are we getting to delivering on that, on that principle that was clearly made by many of us in one way, shape, or form as a, as a pledge while on council.
So is there more deliberations on the language of...
Can I just say a few comments, too? Because, you know, I, all the things that you've said, I, I have in mind. Also, one thing that kind of is on the other side of things is that it says a little bit to me that there's, that he already has a rental permit. And further, it seems that, from, from some comment, at least one comment from the community, that this property is in probably better shape than the typical rental permit. You know, the owner that has a rental permit. And so in terms of, Sylvia was talking about, you know, I think that is the council's goal. I guess I looked at it as potentially being productive toward that goal, in some instances at least. If we are, if you're looking at having a rental that is in not as good a shape, or, you know, and, and saying, well, I could turn that into a VRBO, I might make a little bit more money on it, but I'm going to have to keep it in better shape. You know, the question is, you know, is that desirable to reach, you know, into further our goals?
I would say no, because then you have even more turnover. I mean, it's bad enough living on a street where most of your neighbors move out every year. And now we have someone who wants to rent to people, you never know who belongs there. And you don't have a neighbor there even for a year. So I'm sorry, but I, I don't agree with this.
I will say that, again, to get back to the type of people that are going to be renting VRBOs are not generally going to be the type that you don't want in a community that are, are those types of bad tenants that we all see, that you see in certain apartment complexes. But I understand, I, you know, I can, and the way that's written, I can still operate as a VRBO. Frankly, the first traveling nurse that was going to be here was there for five months. She had planned to come back for five months. You're not going to get rid of necessarily VRBOs, and given the attractiveness of the location, it's going to lend itself, and as we had figured in mind, to those that are, those who are going to be there long-term, traveling nurses, visiting professors, the out-of-the-blue ones with the sports mother. But it's still permitted, and in the meantime, it's going to sit empty, which would you prefer?
So the, the comments I would make, just so the council's clear, and everyone else as well, the comments are, I think, accurate, but the ordinance won't permit anybody to get a new rental permit, to then have a VRBO on a, on a thirty-day basis.
I don't really have a problem with existing rental permits going to...
Yeah. So I think you've got a pretty small...
Two-month, three-month leases, that's their prerogative.
Right.
So with that hotel tax that we have now, when is that applicable?
Now.
I mean, but what is it, when is it applicable to someone in, in, you know, in his situation?
I think we adopted it as...
Yeah, it's, it's applicable now. I mean, I didn't know any, there was one operating, and, I mean, I'd heard rumors and stuff, but yeah, that, that should be being collected and paid.
We don't have a process around that, so since it's financed, how about if I work?
If it's a hotel, then...
Well, it's being treated similarly, like a hotel.
Well, and I, and I don't disagree with that. I mean, if it's a hotel, then, then two, three days' stays, VRBO is the same thing. So, I mean, I can, I mean, to anybody who's, for a long, short time period is a one, not rent, but on the same basis as a hotel.
Council, do you want to put an implementation date of next July on this ordinance, if passed? To allow Brian to...
It makes a difference. I don't think it makes a difference. We're just punting the issue down the, down the road.
And, and just for the record, and due to, number one, my, I do have bookings all the way through, like, the middle of August next year, various lines.
Would you, would you, should we have him come up to the microphone if he's going to speak? I, I don't know if this is being recorded.
I don't know, he's not giving me the eye in there, but...
I'm real loud, so. I'm an attorney by, so I'm naturally loud. I do have bookings all the way through the middle of August, I was checking my calendar. Number two, if you were to choose to say, sorry, they're not grandfathered, I've already checked with my attorney, and we would consider that a takings, and we would be seeking legal action to stop you from not grandfathering those, since they're already booked. So, and I, I don't want to threaten, I'm just saying...
I kind of take it as a threat, though.
I know, I get it. I'm on your council. I'm just telling you, I mean, I'm just telling you.
But you don't have a permit for this use, I mean, like, this is...
I have a rental permit.
You haven't been submitting hotel tax, I don't...
Yeah, I don't, I was, I, when I first, when I first requested a rental, I explained what I was doing with it, and they said, this is what you need to do. So, and I, and I get it. You know, if it's a hotel, tell me. And I'll, I'll do it, I'll work it that way. But, you know, it's going to, it's, if it's a hotel motel, I can operate as a VRBO and consider it basically a bed and breakfast, and submit my hotel motel tax. I can keep it at the bookings for however long I, I choose. Just like a hotel. Hotels, you're only there overnight, right? What's the difference?
Commercial, commercial zoning for a hotel.
I'm already there. Again, a taking.
You're not there legally.
No, no.
But, but that, you know, there's, there's a forum to address it.
Yeah, okay, then buy my, buy my house for four hundred and seventy thousand, or whatever it's worth now. But when I first applied here, when I first bought it, I was told about the, about the rental, rental permit. I explained what I was doing with it, and they said, submit it, and this is what you need to do. So I complied. If you want me to comply with something else, and if you're going to take it away from me, then we're going to have some issues to talk about.
Steve, are we allowed to vote on this, having made the change, or does it need to get posted for another month?
No, you can vote on it with the change being the thirty days, but it would be your first consideration.
Okay, and Sylvia walked out, so...
Should we wait for her to come out?
Yeah, so...
Go ahead and raise your question, Lisa.
Do we want to collapse this in any way?
Let me take a look at that, if you may. Oh, did you say collapse? I'm sorry.
What did you think I said?
Collect tax.
Collect.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Well, we can get her vote when she comes back.
I guess I'm not inclined to collapse it.
Okay, so this would be first consideration with the thirty day...
So do we have to revert, what about the revert back motion? Is that just going to be part of the whole?
Oh, is that either roll call, or is that...
I didn't think there was a motion for it, but if there was, if you have a second, you should vote on that.
I have Virginia and Lisa.
Yeah, Virginia and Lisa, for thirty days.
Oh, no, I didn't...
That's what it was.
Right. Yeah, that was adopted, wasn't it? That mo, that amendment?
We're still talking about it.
We haven't voted on it.
Nobody voted.
Okay, I thought you, I thought you voted on the thirty days part.
No.
Okay, very well.
I'm trying to keep track.
Can we vote now, or is it roll?
You're questioning me.
No, you can vote, you can vote now.
It's a, it's a roll call vote.
It's not, not the amendment to the...
They'll just let her abstain.
No, she'll be absent.
There was a motion by Virginia and a second by Lisa for ordinance number three-three with thirty days instead of ninety, and this is first consideration.
Right, so that, that could be a roll call.
Okay, and that's a roll call. So roll call vote.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
I don't like Airbnbs, period, so I'm just going to vote no.
Okay.
I mean, that's the, what, that's the opposite. That's the opposite of what you just did.
Okay, what, what was the motion?
Right now, we're voting on reverting it back to thirty days.
No, I think you're voting on the ordinance with thirty days, is the way Louise stated it.
Okay, well, whatever, I don't approve.
So you're voting against it?
Uh-huh.
No, she doesn't want Airbnb's.
I don't want Airbnb's.
This is a prohibition on Airbnb's.
Okay.
So you're going to vote?
Whatever.
Whatever. You're going to vote no. I don't know, you have to say, Dottie. It's... Okay, we'll skip you and we'll keep voting.
Casada.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carried.
Can we clarify Dottie's?
Yeah, and then I want to clarify Dottie's, okay.
Okay, I am not in favor, so I'm in conjunct, I vote with Lisa, yes.
Okay.
Five, zero.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, so, and this is first consideration again, so this will be back next month.
Right.
Okay, so now we're going to go jump back up to the mayor's report, and I submitted a written report. And are there any questions? Okay, now we'll go to the legal report.
Okay, only a couple of things, I guess, that weren't, that aren't elsewhere on the agenda. The first is the consideration of eighteen thirty-four, which authorizes the mayor to sign the clerk to attest an amendment to the conditional zoning agreement that had been entered in regarding the hotel property, given the, what I was directed to prepare was a proposed change for how the olive court properties would be handled.
It's actually forty-three, you kind of flipped it to thirty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, yep.
And so is there a motion for consideration of resolution eighteen forty-three?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Virginia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Discussion.
I wanted to see if none general contractors could, could participate. I think individuals who want to move into these homes as a primary owner-occupied home, and who want to rush and go get a, a design team and a general contractor lined up, I think they should have the same opportunity as, as anybody else to compete. And I think that's probably more desirable.
Sure, I'd say so.
Yeah, I think that's really more the next, next, but their, their hand in glove. I, I think that's easily made, the, the resolution eighteen forty-four, which has the RFP.
RFP.
Gives some leeway to, you know, expand the exact language of the RFP, and, yeah, I agree with you.
So...
So I'm sorry, can you then remind me a summary of eighteen forty-three then? It's kind of late, and I'm going to...
Yeah, so, yep, eighteen...
I've got a long day today.
Eighteen forty-three, there were some specific provisions that were related to those olive court homes, back when the council was sort of taking a different approach to those homes. Now that the council's going to do this RFP approach, we're just clarifying that, kind of out, out with the old and in with the new. So the CZA said certain things had to be part of those renovations, and, and this is the amendment to say, no, we're going to ask for RFPs with specific things for each home, and then ask for contractors or in... to say, no, we're gonna ask for RFPs with specific things for each home and then ask for contractors or individuals participating as bidders to suggest what are the things they would like to do.
Okay, then I, my request still stands that there would be language clarifying on eighteen forty-three that contractors, well, bidders, unless you can define the term to include non-contractors, that's all I care.
Well, and then would it be?
It wouldn't seem like contractors even addressed in eighteen forty-three, so can we save that for eighteen forty-four?
Just anybody should be able to bid. But then, is it bidding what, for the cost to get, so that you sell it to the highest bidder? Or, you know, it should be open, fair and objective in choices, so how do we achieve that?
How do we choose, how do we choose a contractor and/or future homeowner? There's a scoring matrix of sales price and renovations and reputation and quality of previous work.
Look at those.
The council next month will appoint a committee to look at those.
I, I don't like a committee. I'd, I'd like to have objective criteria so there is absolutely clear and fair.
And the reason I, I have something else to say is the reputation part. If you're a, a new person who, who, you're not gonna have a reputation if you are a single owner. And that's my only concern is that we're already setting up.
It's only ten percent of the score and I do think it's an important component because you can't get somebody in there with big dreams who's never.
So, can we create?
I think it might be problematic to get somebody in there with no experience.
To do a wash between the two, between that category and the individual person concern, can we create a new box that gives the same amount of points to ten if you're, and, and, you know, an individual? Cause at the end of the day, if you were the one who bids for any of the properties and you're saying, these are all the things I'm gonna do, I'm assuming that's a contract and if that's a contract, it's enforceable and if it's enforceable, you better darn well.
Yeah, the house does not convey to the new owner until those things are completed.
That's right, and so either it's a big money pit for the individual who thinks they can do it or it's a big success. I'd rather see it be a success, but I don't want ten points to edge out a, a natural person ahead of a GC LLC like Greg or anybody else just because they've been doing this for over ten, fifteen, twenty years. I think it's a huge, serious ten point disadvantage. And I wanna see these homes occupied by, by, by individuals who wanna be there. They're cute homes, especially the one on the west side and I think.
So what about an individual who buys it, doesn't fix it up to our specification and then doesn't want to sell it?
Virginia just said the house doesn't convey to you until you have completed the entire list of things you said you would do.
I think even if you're an individual, though, you're gonna have to be able to show that you're competent and so I don't think you're losing the ten points as an individual at all. I think you can still have an equal opportunity to compete for those ten.
I think then the ten points needs to address that prior work can be shown higher. You, you get your, you get more points as an individual if you hire a, a general contractor to work with and if you hire maybe an architectural firm to work with them too.
I think that's thinking or really complicated.
No, I think that's, that's preserving the ten point advantage that a corporation is gonna get.
No, but there's no advantage, it's just can you, can you convince the committee that you're gonna be competent at doing the things that you're gonna do?
But there's a point system to it.
The criteria worry me.
Yeah, it's the, it's a ten point system.
I don't think we have consensus on this.
So then maybe remove it. I just don't think it's a fair, it's already setting up a potential slight advantage to an LLC.
I, I totally disagree. I think if some, if an individual who's got some experience at redoing homes comes in and says, I've got a great proposal for you, I think they've probably got a pretty good shot at it.
I, I.
Is the word contractor the issue? Is it, I mean, if it just says experience, I mean, are you talking about the word contractor or what do you?
How about if it's your first home, if you've been living at Grandview Court for a long time, stockpiling your money and all of a sudden you have an opportunity to buy in to Olive Court in a cute bungalow, you can fix it up with, I would say, award more points to either an LLC who has done these renovations or to the natural person, which is a, a human being, who can hire a, a GC. I'd say, wow, this person gets more points over the person who says, I've done it and I'm gonna do it this way and I promise to deliver on all these things. And even then, I feel like I am, I'm giving an advantage to somebody who's gonna spend more money than a GC. I don't know.
And then is there, is there a dollar sign by which, you know, you are, you are limited so that, you know, this is a fair auction, so to speak?
If not, just remove the category. Seems to be fair between a natural person.
I mean, I certainly think, yeah, I think experience is relevant. I just didn't know if you were being, you were getting hung up on the, the word contractor. But I mean, I think experience is, I mean, I think like, like has been said, it's ten out of, out of a hundred.
That's ten percent.
And I, I think it is.
It's a B and a B.
I think it is relevant, though, if the person has experience doing this before.
Well, it doesn't have to be the person and that person could have a, have somebody that would bid for them.
Right, and, and that's all I wanna say is a language should clarify that your experience can either be engaged with someone else.
Well, let's look at that in eighteen forty-four.
Well, I, I just wanna make sure it's not gonna get in conflict. Steve, how, how would that con, I wanna make sure that this concept is preserved with this forty-three.
Forty-three doesn't really speak to these things. It just says that we're gonna, that we're gonna, the council is going to.
It's forty-four.
Sort of modify what it said in the CZA. It doesn't talk about what it's gonna do next in terms of a RFP.
Can we vote?
Forty-three. Yeah.
Okay, so discussion's done. So this is consideration of resolution eighteen forty-three, roll call vote.
Maher.
With the changes, with the modifications, I'd vote yes.
They're not in this resolution.
There aren't any in eighteen forty-three.
Oh, wait a minute, eighteen forty-three. Oh, I'll abstain, I'm.
Okay.
Casada.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Carried.
Okay, now we have eighteen forty-four and that's where the word contractor's in.
And experience.
Contractors.
And the ten percent.
The ten percent.
Yep.
So just to clarify.
Bottom of page, page five.
Steve, do you wanna, nope, you're good.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I was gonna say, as I, as the ord, as the resolution provides, the language of the RFP can be modified. I mean, I, I certainly think that, that, you know, either adding to the word contractor or deleting the word contractor and coming up with a different word and making it clear that, you know, when you evaluate experience, it can be just you or it can be, I mean, if a, if a contractor, you know.
Can you change the word contractors to bidder?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could come up with language. The point is, is that whoever your team is, I mean, a contractor's not gonna do it all himself or herself. They're gonna have employees and they're gonna have subcontractors and we asked for their, we asked for that team. So I think, I mean, I think it can be pretty easily expanded to include somebody who says, well, I haven't really, I'm not a general contractor, but I'd like to do this. Here's the contractor and the subcontractors we're gonna use. And I think that, you know, that collective experience can go into that, that analysis from my standpoint, if that's, if that's the council's direction.
From your standpoint, when is this effective? When is eighteen dash forty-four effective as the process?
Um, when the council adopts it.
Okay, because that's the other issue I wanted to discuss. Just knowing individuals, I'm, I'm here to protect the little people. I think people have a chance to put their money together, to go talk to designers, architects, interview general contractors, many of whom are already building because it's a rush to, to the fall. I'd like to see this council adopt an implementation date to go out and take RFPs in, sometime in the next quarter in twenty nineteen, only because I want the little people to have an opportunity to get their resources together. People like Greg Slusser and Glasgow, they already have, you, you were told tonight that they're already a GC, they've got that license ready to go. They're ready to bid on this potentially, maybe, I don't know. And anybody else that is an LLC or contractor's ready to go, except the little people. And I'd like to have some time built into this RFP process so we can announce it, advertise it, circulate it and get people to go out and check their financing, check their availability of resources and who they wanna work with so they can even start competing. Otherwise, we're just setting up the little guy to fail because he won't meet the deadline.
Yeah, I, I agree with that completely.
I don't think it's smart to leave these houses sitting empty for another four months.
You need time, you need time, even an individual would need to be sure.
They need to get a mortgage, maybe, they need to figure out what they're gonna do.
To get their resources.
It's a serious disadvantage to the little people. And I personally know of some people that may very well be interested in trying to get their, their finances together and figure out, but they have day job number one. They're, they don't have tenants and finance people like Greg and Jen do to do this work. So I'd hope the council would consider.
Well, it's a, it's a pretty big project and I don't think time is the critical factor here. I think that we need enough time for people to decide and to get their resources.
I say, no, I wanna get these houses.
So, you know, time is not an issue.
I don't want them sitting empty all winter.
You what?
So.
What's the status of these houses now, I wanna know, cause I, I've been, I've been asking and Lori, Lori and I determined that we're not collecting our rent, so I wanna know what's been going on with the rent. That's a legal opinion we'll get from Steve at a later time.
They're empty.
Where are the tenants right now?
They moved out.
Okay, great, so we're not losing anything.
I'm ready to vote.
We've, I'm not.
So.
And because I'm not, I'm going to have to abstain.
Okay, so consideration of resolution eighteen forty-four, is there a motion?
Um, I want to ask, did we adopt clarification on the term contractor and experience?
I move adoption of eighteen forty-four, substituting the word contractor to bidder.
Okay, that's a motion by Virginia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Okay, any further discussion?
Um, I have a question. Does the, does the motion extend to the change where the, is this a global change? That will be taking place, Steve? Are you interpreting it that way or is it just gonna be limited to whatever section this is popping up in? So for example, if you have a table with the point system, will you change the word contractor to bidder?
That's part of this, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's a global clarification, okay? And the implementation you're saying is essentially tonight. So tomorrow, the next month, this goes, these houses go up for auction, they go up for auction next month, correct? Is that what, is that the rollout timeline of this ordinance?
There's, why, I mean, it's football season, you don't even have people that are thinking about those houses on, on Olive.
So they can be in construction.
Unless you're in construction. If you're not, that's my point too. If you're not in construction, if you're just like a homeowner somewhere, they, they need time cause they don't have these resources at their fingertips and we have nothing to lose.
By thirty days? Then that's like just adding a fifth.
That's like tomorrow.
Yeah, but this is like, this is a huge disadvantage to the little guy and I'd hate to see a family.
I disagree that there's nothing to lose on having a house set empty over the winter. I think that's a risky prospect, but.
Well, you're asking a great deal for someone who is not in the business to get their act together, their finances in, in thirty days when they have a work situation?
To secure a loan, I mean.
I mean, that's, or even getting a loan, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, they're gonna have to get their act together if they wanna be able to.
You can't do it in thirty days.
What I'm saying is.
You're not going to get a cross-section of the community. And that is my concern, cause you're just, it's, it's in group all the way and I don't like that as a council person.
What do you mean in group?
It's, it's just a selective group. It's, it's not opening it up to everybody and that's where it should be. It should be people out of university heights and people who, you know, are not contractors.
Good point. I mean, I, I want as much transparency and broadness around, around this auction cause that's our, that's our ability to bring in two new stakeholders into the community for the long haul. If we award this just to a corporation who had the advantage of time, cash on hand or letters of, 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 of letters of credit or line of credits, they can quickly call their broker friend at the bank who's done business for them before.
Yeah, and then they can quickly.
But you're missing.
If they're, if they're the person selected to do the work, they can quickly do the work, get the houses sold and quickly get some new neighbors into these empty houses. I mean, what's, that's the point here.
That's the same thing you could, you would get by one month lead time for a, a little person to do the same. And you wouldn't have to be looking around for another buyer. You'd be eliminating the middleman by providing an individual, not an LLC, just an individual, an opportunity to get at least thirty days to finance. So maybe that's my ask, is that this ordinance be adopted with a thirty day implementation day out. So, not tonight, but it's implemented at the end of, I don't know, by a Septem, no, it's September the eleventh, so maybe.
By the thirtieth.
By the, by the, no, because that's.
Well, right, what you're, the resolution now says that, that it'll be publicized, the RFPs will be publicized and people will be asked to submit proposals by October fifteenth.
See, look, it's already being fast tracked.
If you didn't, if you, if you didn't, I don't know why you would delay the publication of it.
So the fifteenth is pushed out further, at least another thirty days. So if you're looking at November fifteenth. I mean, this, I, all I care about is, number one, giving real people with real dreams to make a home theirs, right? They're gonna bear the brunt of coming up with money, that's fine. They're gonna bear the brunt of locating and retaining a general contractor and design team, fine. And number three, the financing. And the financing is the most critical part because it takes time.
Steve, what would happen if we pass this as is and then we, I mean hypothetically say, say we get people that are coming and saying, well, gosh, I'd really like to do this, but I just, my financing doesn't come in in time. Could the council act in the future to say, let's, you know, give, you know, push out the deadlines at that point if we're actually having that concern? I mean, I guess I'm just, I'll be kinda surprised if we have that concern because this is a big undertaking to take these houses on. There's a lot that needs to be done. I would like to get it going. I also acknowledge the, the issues with leaving the house set empty.
Yeah, it, I don't think anybody would have to have their financing in place to be able to respond to this RFP. I think they'd have to have an idea about their financing, but I don't, you know, it's not like they'd have to have an approved loan from.
Cause the closing is one of the factors, the closing date is a factor.
How can you make a responsible representation to the city of what exactly is your investment improvements on this property? If you don't know what your line of available credit is. That's like a financing one oh one.
Well.
Well, don't people make bids and say.
Well, you're gonna get.
Approval of my financing.
You're gonna get a pocket.
Yeah, but you already know what approval is.
No, they say that.
This way you're pre-selecting actually the pocket, the small little nucleus of people that are already in the business that have done it before and, and they might not even be doing it at the, at the level or the quality that a newbie might be. And I'm, I think you're missing a whole population of people.
Well, I, I feel like there's discretion here. I mean, it says fifty, fifty percent proposed purchase price and other closing considerations.
Yeah, but who's.
Closing date contingencies, including financial contingencies, so, I mean, it's.
Who's making the decision, Nate? Uh, Nick, can you?
The, the committee would be looking, would be squaring it.
Sylvia, let him say his point.
Yeah, I mean, they.
That's my point.
They're, they're saying they wanna move forward with it. They're not saying, you know, you, you keep repeating this little guy comment, but, I mean, they're not over there saying, yeah, we're, we're, you know, we're advocating for, you know, big companies. Hearing them say, you know, we wanna get this going and I, I mean, I have faith that they will do a, do a, you know, a good job. That's why we're appointing them, so.
I just question the logic here, like, big companies might have so much work lined up that they can't even fit the time in their schedule whereas a little guy who's got merely one day job might be able to get things lined up really quickly, so I'm, I'm sorry, I disagree with the logic.
I'm ready to move forward with it, Ezra.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Virginia.
And so now we're ready to vote, roll call vote.
Casada.
No.
Herbold.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
No.
So we have two noes, three yeses, Carried.
Okay. So now.
Latest we've ever gotten to the clerk report.
Okay, so we went through the legal report.
Yep.
Is there anything else?
Could I ask a question here first? When are we going to receive the criteria? Do you have them ready or ready for what you're expecting?
And I also wanna know what the advertising distribution is.
We've already passed that. Can we, could we have that follow-up later? I mean, we're getting pretty late.
Well, I don't care, I want this finished because we haven't finished it.
Well, the criteria are, I mean, I'm not sure what criteria you're talking about, but they're specified in the resolution.
Can you pop up the resolution?
Could you send it out or thing because?
It's right there.
I think it's in the, actually in the RFP. Again, I'm not sure exactly what.
You're talking about page five? Bottom of page five.
Getting there.
Yeah, we really need to keep going.
It's vague.
Through this report.
Yeah, it was.
And we can get those questions answered later.
It was part of the legal report, so you do have it. Is this what you're wanting?
The fifty, forty, ten. The fifty, forty, ten?
I think it's very big.
Okay, so we'll, we're done with Steve, so we'll go on to the clerk report.
Uh, given the late hour and the fact that I know Nate has to drive back to Des Moines, I sent out my reports, I'm happy to answer questions later.
Okay, thank you. Uh, treasures report, now, Lori circulated the warrants, are there any additions or corrections to the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. And now, you had a committee report, Virginia?
Yep, the only thing left is second consideration of ordinance two-three-four, amending ordinance one-nine-one to require dedication of parkland for non-residential development as proposed. I motion adoption of ordinance two-three-four.
Okay, a motion by Virginia, second by Sylvia. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Herbold.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Casada.
Aye.
Carried.
And Nate, you sent around a chief report.
I did, I guess the only thing I want to add to that is, I, I know I spoke to you, Louise, and Nick and I have talked, and I, I think game days thus far, not kind of with a couple of night games coming up, but, um, the game days thus far have been probably the best that I've been a part of in the three and a half seasons of football that I've been here for. Uh, most of the residents have, that have been tailgating have, have cooperated, and there, yeah, there hasn't been any, any major issues outside of what we would normally expect for thousands of guests.
I just have a question with the new signs for towing, have you towed any pursuant to the signs?
Uh, I think we've had three, two or three that have been towed for parking on the streets that are signed as no parking.
Oh, good.
But, yeah, it's been, that has been a far lower number than in years past.
Maybe they can read it now.
That might be part of it.
Yeah, I would just repeat, I've heard compliments from the start of the first tailgating and the first game, until, talking to Paul when I walked in here, I've had compliments about the law enforcement, you know, during that whole time, so, I think you guys have done a great job.
And also-
I have one question for Nate, did you see the situation with the people on the north side of the bridge after the hang, waiting for the train?
Yeah, there was-
They're off, they're two of you're off.
Yeah, there was about a fifteen to twenty-minute stretch there where the, the train line was on the, our side of the, on the bridge there, on the west side, I guess, they were lined up there. It cleared out pretty quickly once the train showed up, but I know they're not supposed to be lining up on that area, so.
Can I just make a recommendation, since that's a sidewalk issue, can we just let Dottie and, Dottie handle it with her ULI?
Yeah, if she wants to, just call the university.
They handled it last year, and we didn't have a problem.
Might have been, well-
I don't know, Louise went to some university meetings, and I don't know why it reappeared, but I liked the dip within the buck.
I did, but I was out there walking by, and they were directing people where to go, you know, and it wasn't line back up all the way to University Heights. I mean, they have people there, just like they did last year, directing people, so I don't know if it was, the plane was way, the plane, the train was way delayed, you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure what it was, because it wasn't-
And then, because they were telling people, they were trying to make me get in that line. I know, we'll talk to them, too. Dottie, Dottie and I will figure it out.
Yeah, we'll talk to them.
We'll talk to them.
Any more sales?
And say that was a problem for a little bit, twenty minutes?
No, I'm driving in the morning.
Thirty minutes, they shouldn't line up there.
Any more sales on parking spots?
Okay, and then-
So that's part of my, so my report, I'm not gonna reread for everybody, I just would ask, and, and maybe I'll consider making a motion, to give Nate discretion this year